We're going to call the meeting's order. First thing is to review and approve the agenda. And I don't have a lot of changes to the agenda. I will say that I, well, I don't have any changes to propose for the agenda. I just also want to observe that this has potential to be a long meeting. So we'll just keep it, you know, keep it, keep it tight. All right.
Just with regard to the agenda, it's not a big deal, but we do have two external guests. We have GMT coming to talk about the My Ride. We've got the folks from Capital Fire Mutual Aid System to talk about their plans. So I'm just wondering if we want to move those ahead of the COVID-19 update and accommodate our guests?
Yeah, that's Yep, I like that. So if it's, I know Cameron, you're probably going to be here for the duration. So I'm just going to move that to the end, if that's okay. Okay, Donna, yeah?
I think it's great to move it, but I wish we would think about this when we made the agenda. I know there were people planning and I told them like that some of them were later in the evening. So they weren't planning to come and join us. So the more we could be rational about this setup and think about that when we do it, it would help.
Yeah, the less we have to move things, the better. All right, so with moving of the COVID-19 update, anything else on people's radar to move? Okay, so with that, we'll consider the agenda approved. So the next item is general business and appearances. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to address the council on a topic that is otherwise not on our agenda. And if you have something you'd like to say, if you would say your name and where you live and try to keep your comments to two minutes, that would be fabulous. All right, so any, any folks want to address the council? So you can unmute yourself and let us know, or you can raise your hand. Either way, it's fine. Cameron, are you seeing anyone?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, then. So we're going to move on to the appointments to of Montpelier High School students to committees and boards. So I know we have at least one student here who is ready to introduce herself. Sophia, would you just introduce yourself a little bit and tell us about your interest in the Conservation Commission?
Hi, my name is Sophia Flora. I'm a sophomore at Montpelier High School. I'm very passionate about climate justice and everything surrounding that. And this seemed like a great opportunity to actually, you know, start making a change and working towards, you know, a better future in Vermont for sure. And so I'm really excited for this opportunity. And yeah, there is another girl from my school who is also interested in doing this. And she just emailed me to let me know that she can't make it because she couldn't get home in time. But she is also very excited about this as well.
And just for context, I know you had both applied or want to be a part of the Conservation Commission. And I checked with the board chair to ask if, you know, if it would be okay if we appointed you both. And that they said that would be okay. So just for everyone else's information. And then, so Althea is not here. Also, Lorenza Fector is applying to be on the Public Art Commission, but I don't see Lorenza here unless I am mistaken. Okay. Any questions for Sophia? Okay. Is there a motion? Yes, Jack?
Pursuant to one VSA, section 313A3, I move that we go into executive session to consider the appointment of a public official.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All right, well, we hopefully will be right back here. All in favor, please say aye.
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 And opposed? Okay, well, we will be right back. So you can stay on the line and this call will remain open. So motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
There's a second. Great, further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 And opposed? All right, is there a motion regarding the appointments?
Yeah, so I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Sophia Flora to the Conservation Commission, Althea Torrance Martin to the Conservation Commission, and Lorenza Fletcher to the Public Art Commission Committee.
I'll second.
Great, okay, so there's a motion and a second. And just to be clear, these are student positions. So they're not confused with other regular, regular positions. Yeah, okay. All right, motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oh, Lorenza, hello. We just appointed you. Oh, my gosh. It is all good, no worries.
Good.
And Sophia, just have one other comment for, for Sophia. Just based on your comments about an interest in climate change, we also encourage you to look into the Energy Committee as well, which deals a lot with climate issues. Okay, well, thank you. Thank you, Lorenza. Thank you, Sophia and Althea for, for your willingness to step up. And so grateful that you're going to be participating in our boards. Okay, so we are going to keep going then. And I have lost my agendas. This is going to take me a second. So I think the next thing was that it was either, was it the My Ride?
It's next on the agenda.
That is what's next?
Yes.
Okay, so to, I'm not sure who is, oh, Elizabeth Parker. You do have to unmute yourself, though.
I know. Am I, is my sound changing?
Smith is here. All right, but hang on one second, go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, just for the students that just got appointed, you don't, if you're, we'd love to have you hang out and watch our meeting all night long if you're interested, but there's no reason to hang out. You're all set to go. You have something you'd rather be doing.
Mark to believe, but some people
And Bill, is there anything else you or staff want to say about this before I turn it over to?
Not really. In fact, there's probably council members that know more about this, but we, we've known that GMT and groups in the community were working on, I think we were calling it, what was it, we had not
My Ride.
Yeah, it's called My Ride now. I can't remember what we were calling it before.
Don't remember.
Yeah, we don't remember.
We don't want to remember.
Okay, good. And so we had asked for an update on where this project was and what was going on. As it appeared, it was about ready to roll out. So council members Casey and Bate have been our direct representatives. And Elizabeth is here from Sustainable Montpelier. And Jamie Smith, I believe, is on the call from GMT.
I'm here. So I do have just a really brief presentation. If folks are interested in seeing what the app looks like, I know that you're sort of pressed for time. So if you'd prefer that I just kind of go through where we are, that's, that's okay as well.
I, I think it would be great if we could see the app. Let's, if you've created a presentation, let's, let's do it.
Perfect.
You should be able to share your screen now.
Great, can you see it?
Yes.
Yep. Perfect. So for those of you who don't know me, my name is Jamie Smith, and I'm the Director of Marketing and Planning at Green Mountain Transit. So along with the My Ride Community Advisory Group and Sustainable Montpelier Coalition and lots of other community partners, we've been working on My Ride. So I'll just give a little introduction here. So ta-da, this is the welcome screen. When folks download the app, this is what they will see. Cute little picture of Montpelier in the background and a GMT vehicle. So for those of you who are not familiar with this service, it's a flexible route, flexible schedule service that will be coming to Montpelier launching January 4th. Essentially, it's sort of an Uber for public transportation. The hours of operation are similar to the services that we have now in downtown Montpelier. So Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Saturdays from 8:00 to 6:00 PM, with the only difference being that, you know, folks can now pick, have a pickup and drop off location custom to their schedule and where they want to go. This is the, the My Ride service area. You can see the shaded top half of the map is the, the core of downtown Montpelier. The northern part is CCV all the way down to the airport. So this is about a seven and a half mile radius in downtown Montpelier. And then you can see a tiny little blip over where the Amtrak station is because that is covered in the, the My Ride service area. That top shaded half is the fare free zone. So right now GMT is operating fare free in our whole system due to COVID. That will continue likely in the launch of this service. But when we do reinstitute fares, that bottom half of the map will be subject to a fare similar to what we have currently on the Montpelier Hospital Hill, which will be a dollar for a one-way trip. So folks who are using the My Ride app will input their location or their destination, depending on how they want to book their trip. This is the screen that they will see. They can confirm that it's one passenger to however many passengers they're traveling with. So this is similar to what they'll see. The far right-hand screen is the, the, the actual trip. And it will show you, you know, that there's a short walk from here to the next stop or whatever information that folks need to be able to navigate the system safely. That information will be requested or shown right there. And then they can just hit that book this ride trip to schedule it. From there, it's similar to like Google Transit where it will give you some navigation information if the bus is not able to serve your immediate front door and you have to walk a little ways. It will tell you how to do that here. You'll know all that information prior to actually booking the trip. Similar to Uber, down at the bottom, you'll see some information about the vehicle that's coming to pick you up, including the plate number. We will be using the current fleet that GMT has right now. So this will be really helpful for folks to be able to distinguish the My Ride vehicle from regular vehicles traveling through Montpelier. There's a notification center that tells you, you know, if you've booked trips for a month, a subscription trip, if you're using this to get to and from work every day, this notification center will tell you your subscriptions are about to expire. You need to rebook trips. You have a My Ride pass that's about to expire. Any information, service alerts, if there's a disruption in the service or delay in the system. And then credit notification. So if you buy credits on the app, it will give you information here about how much credit you have left. So what happens if folks don't have a smartphone? Obviously, there are folks in the Montpelier area that will not be able to use the app. So for those folks, there are some, some options. If they have internet access in a computer, they'll be able to book their trips right online. They won't need to use a phone. If they don't have a computer, the GMT Call Center will be available for all of the service hours, Monday through Saturday, to help folks book their trip. They will be able to book their trips through the customer service representatives that are at the Montpelier Transit Center. And then we'll have, to begin, we'll have a tablet station in the Montpelier Transit Center. For all of you who know, in the midday, there's not usually a customer service rep at the kiosk. So we will have a tablet station there for folks to be able to go in and access to book their trips. And we all are also trying to identify other locations in downtown that would be useful for folks to have a tablet station. But to start, we'll have it at the Transit Center. Behind the scenes, there's a lot happening. The Sustainable Montpelier Coalition recently conducted a week of onboard surveys and phone surveys with current riders. They rode the Montpelier Hospital Hill and the Montpelier Circulator buses to talk to folks, gain some insights on technology capabilities that folks have, and just get some general feedback on this, on this type of service and how folks would feel about that. There have been meetings and interviews conducted with community partner organizations. In the recent weeks, the Coalition, along with the My Ride Community Advisory Group, have been meeting regularly. We have three subcommittees, a governance committee, current riders committee, and a metrics committee. So we're really trying to dig deep into the backend of this service so we can make sure that we're not affecting current riders in a, in a bad way. We want to make this service better for them, not worse. So we've been talking about that and what metrics would be important to report out to our partners. So the other things that we've been discussing are the passenger feedback to date. Like I said, minimizing passing, current passenger impacts. We've been talking about outreach and marketing to key groups of riders. We've discussed the service structure, area operations. We certainly have been engaging community businesses, hoping that they will act as ambassadors of My Ride to assist passengers who are out in the field. I listed some here. So for example, Shaw's, Hanford, Walmart. So for folks who don't have access to a smartphone, we're hoping that the customer service reps at those locations will be able to assist passengers. And then through the community engagement, we have discovered a cohort of current passengers who might need a little extra assistance, especially at the launch of this service. And so in response to that, the Sustainable Montpelier Coalition has been working pretty closely with the Montpelier Housing Authority. And there will be some training and pre-registration sessions for these folks to make sure that they're in the system and they fully understand, you know, come day one, when they need to start booking their trips, what they're going to do. And we're even going to try to assist them in booking their first week of trips so they don't have to try to figure it all out on day one. Marketing and outreach. So this is sort of where we are at this point. From now until launch, Elizabeth and I will be communicating quite a bit. So we have been working on a pretty robust marketing and outreach plan. There are some restrictions, boarding restrictions that we currently have on GMT vehicles. Our small buses, we're only allowing nine passengers onboard. So we're trying to transition current riders to the new service without actually asking potential new riders to come on at this point. We want to make sure that, you know, folks feel safe, that our boarding maximums can accommodate the, the additional ridership. We're working on a website that will be launched this week. And sort of behind the scenes, we're working on a toolkit of social media posts, press releases, front porch forum messaging, all the standard things that we will put out on our own, but also share with all of the, the community partners that we're working with. Hopefully, we'll launch the marketing campaign the week of December 14th. The app should be available in mid-December, but I think we all know how app development goes. It might not be available until closer to the launch of the service, but we're hoping for mid-December. So again, timeline, we're working on the marketing now. December 15th, 16th, and 17th, the GMT staff will begin training. We'll have a full simulation, drivers, dispatchers, customer service reps using the system in the field, testing it to make sure that come January 4th, we've got all the kinks worked out and we know exactly what we're going to be doing. So beyond that week of training, we'll be working with the My Ride Community Advisory Group to develop the toolkit of materials. We'll do some training with that organization for folks who have stepped up to become ambassadors of the service, training folks how to pre-register riders, et cetera. So then we're on schedule for a, a launch of January 4th. So that's a pretty brief explanation of what's happening, but I'm happy to answer any questions that folks might have.
Thank you, Jamie. I have a question. That January 4th launch date, is that for current riders only? Or is that available to the public? Or is the service available to the public at that point?
The service will be available to the public at that point.
Okay, great, wonderful. I am totally going to use this. Connor?
No, I just wanted to see, being on the committee with Donna, it's really exciting to see this rollout, you know? I think with COVID especially, like we've pushed pause on so many of the big ideas. But Sustainable Montpelier is so scrappy, they don't get like much noise, like city funding. And they've been like just great, like zealots, like saying, we're going to keep going. You know, it'll reduce congestion downtown, it's going to help our carbon footprint. And I think the more I talk to people, like low-income folks in town, it's going to help them get to where they need to go without spending a fortune and maybe even reducing the need for a new car. So I'm really pumped, you know, GMT's been like really responsive on this. And I see Peter Kelman's on there. He's been like a Jack Russell terrier on your leg, you know? Always advocating for the right thing. So, no, I just want to thank everybody involved. This is, this is really exciting.
Great, thank you. Other questions or comments?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Morgan.
Hi. Welcome around District 3 resident. And I apologize for previous meetings where I forgot to introduce myself. So I have some questions for you, Jamie.
Sure.
Okay, so could you, would it be possible to put that map back up?
Yes.
Okay, good. So, thank you. So my question mostly relates to the portion of the map that's in the blue that goes up to like Hospital Hill and all that. So you had mentioned that at some point, the, the fear will kick in for that portion of this new service and the My Ride. And you said it was a dollar. However, right now, well, if the fears hadn't been right now, it's a, you know, free rides on the fixed routes and all that. But, but the, the regular fear is a dollar before, but it was 50 cents for people with disabilities and seniors. And will the, uh, will the portion in blue when the fears go, will that be the same?
Yes, it will.
Okay. The other question I have is, so when we had the fears, people that live in Montpelier Housing Authority buildings, the two, two lane shops and Pioneer Apartments, they have a bus pass. And they can use that bus pass on Hospital Hill and, you know, the other fixed routes within the capital district. Well, will those persons in lane shops and Pioneer Apartments still be able to use their bus passes for the My Ride in the, where, where there'll be the fear?
Yes, so we'll set residents up in the system to indicate that they're from Lane Shops or Pioneer. And when they book the trip or when the call center books the trip for them, they will just indicate that they're from those housing locations. And then we'll do the same thing that we do now. We'll bill Montpelier Housing Authority for those trips. So yes, it'll work similarly.
Okay, so it won't change in that regard?
Correct.
Okay. One other kind of technical question regarding this. The, in the past, even though we're using the bus pass, the housing authority would ask us, hey, if you're changing routes and stuff, ask for a transfer. Because, you know, otherwise they keep getting charged and, you know, the transfers were available. This kind of does away with that in a way. I mean, you know, once, you know, certain areas go to, you know, fears, it kind of puts a hitch in there, doesn't it? Have you thought about that?
So this will work similarly to the fixed routes now. Folks that are on the My Ride vehicle will still be able to get a transfer and they'll be able to transfer to a fixed route.
Okay, so, so that doesn't change?
Right.
I'm glad you thought about that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Great, thank you. Elizabeth?
I just wanted to make a short comment. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Oh, my God, I haven't, I, my sound card didn't get fixed on Wednesday because Wes had to close. Oh, so I have to find a day to send it in. Anyway, it was very powerful doing the onboard survey. And I think that, so Hanif Nazarelli, who's on Complete Streets and M-TIC, was part of that crew. And our Merrick Corps volunteer, Tom Huberkin, also was one of the interviewers. And we found a, a real range of interest and ability to, to make the transition easily. So we identified certain people who are, who really rely on fixed schedule and are very angry that they weren't even considered in this decision-making process, they feel. And so we've been really working on building relationships with those individuals. There are people who don't have any technology, as, as Jamie described. And we're very fortunate that we have Peter Yonke from VCIL on the group. He has some money for people to get to actually be sponsored for a flip phone or cellphone. And, and then it ranges up to the people who are college students who walk 10 minutes down Berry Street in the sweltering heat or the cold with a stroller to get on Hospital Hill to go up to the, to the mall to shop and have come back with heavy backpacks that they, and they were so delighted that they could get picked up close to their home. And, you know, there, there are people who were like, oh, yeah, I can load the app, no problem, you know? So we're thinking about, the one thing Jamie didn't talk about was that we're thinking about offering an incentive or a thank you for people uploading the app of doing a My Ride coffee mug and/or Dunkin' Donut gift certificate. So that's kind of, we're thinking about how to do that. But it's really exciting. There is so much. And then, then there are people who are solidly know, who after seeing us on the bus for a while and talking and understanding it have gone to yes. So it's a relationship-building exercise and it's very exciting. And if any of you know of someone who would benefit from a one-on-one assistance on adapting, getting registered and adapting to My Ride, please let us know with Sustainable Montpelier because we're here to help. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I so appreciate that you have put obviously a huge emphasis on ensuring that no one is left behind in this transition. And that, that really comes through. And I think it's incredibly important and we're so grateful. Any other comments, questions? I'm looking forward to this. I, I'm psyched. This is going to be how I get to work. All right. Thank you again and looking forward to it rolling out. All right, so and Sophia, just in case you weren't here, we did appoint you to the Conservation Commission. Okay, you heard that, great. Okay. So moving on, I believe we have
So I was in such a rush to get to My Ride, not a mayor, that Eagle Eye Councilmember Richardson noted that we skipped the consent agenda.
Oh, we skipped the consent agenda. Let's, let's do that.
Since I'm so excited about it, I'll, I'll be happy to move the consent agenda.
Motion and a second. Motion and a second. Um, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 And opposed. Okay. All right, so we are up to, um, getting an update from, uh, Capital Fire Mutual Aid. And their dispatch projects, and I believe we have Scott Bag here from, um, Capital Fire and as well as, uh, Bob Gowns.
So I There's a few other people I think that haven't shown, shown faces, but I see some names that I recognize. So just to tee this up before the folks get on and introduce themselves, I think probably the best way. You know, we've been talking about dispatch systems and all this, and it came to our attention that Capital Fire was working on a project which sounded interesting. And so the council, I think, meeting or two ago, asked if they could come and update us on what was going on. And, um, they very promptly got back to us and said they would be happy to. So we've scheduled them for tonight, and as I said, I think there's, I see Paul Seruti and Scott Bag here, I think Sally Dillon is on, and probably a few others. So, um, I'm gonna turn it over to Scott or Paul or whoever's gonna lead this and they can take it from there. And thank you very much for joining us.
Well, thank you for inviting us. I'm just making sure everybody can hear me. I apologize for, uh, wearing a mask. I am at my, uh, my full-time gig, uh, working here at the hospital in the emergency department, and I was lucky enough to, uh, break away. So please excuse the, uh, the gear, but it is necessary as everybody's aware within this time. Um, I do have a, a, a quick statement to give, I hope it'll only take a couple of minutes, um, which outlines the project, if that's all right with the council.
Go right ahead.
Perfect. Well, thank you, um, for the City of Montpelier for inviting us as the Communications Committee to your council meeting tonight. It's my pleasure to introduce the members of the Capital Fire Mutual Aid System Communications Committee. Um, first, I'd like to introduce Assistant Chief Sally Dillon. She is from Waterbury and is also a, uh, Public Safety Dispatcher for the State Police, uh, many, many years of experience. So she brings, uh, a couple of different roles to our committee. Next, I'd like to introduce Chief Paul Seruti from the Woodbury Fire Department and Chief William Schwartz from the Marshfield Fire Department. Um, both these gentlemen have been instrumental, um, along with all the other members of our Communications Committee. Um, and just to introduce myself, my name is Scott Bag. And, um, I am on East Montpelier Fire, Northfield Ambulance and District Six and have been a part of, uh, uh, Fire and EMS in Central Vermont for over twenty-eight years. So thank you for, uh, allowing us to come forward. I wanna call out in one last, uh, recognition, I wanna thank the Montpelier Police Department Leadership and especially Supervisor Cummings for helping us with this project and to get to where we are today. So the Capital Fire Mutual Aid System was organized many decades ago with a purpose to coordinate services, supplies and mutual aid responses amongst various fire departments throughout Central Vermont. Its members consist of fire departments, public service agencies through our region, with their representatives being the fire chiefs of these various agencies, including the City of Montpelier. In that spirit of cooperation, many fire departments, ambulance services and fast squads have coordinated and come together as a group to receive dispatch services from the City of Montpelier Police Department, known as Capital West. This partnership has continued to grow, foster, mature and solidify while it represents the very best of public safety integration throughout Central Vermont. Our committee and our departments look forward to continuing this strong cooperative partnership for the long-term future. For now and for decades to come. To accomplish notification of emergency responses to our various agencies, the Capital Fire Mutual Aid System uses a myriad of towers, transmitters and connections. These include the use of copper lines that have been in place since the nineteen eighties, reliance on the, uh, state of Vermont microwave system and various repeaters to get signals to our towers. These towers are located in various areas of our region, including Mount Irish in Berlin, Waterbury, Woodbury, Walden and Waitsfield. Ten to fifteen years ago, it was identified that this patchwork of technology was decades old and desperately needed to be upgraded. This fact was then worsened by narrowbanding of our frequency, which resulted in the decreased radio coverage of Central Vermont. Furthermore, our frequency that we use for dispatching has become significantly overcrowded. We share this primary frequency not only with our agencies, not being dispatched by Montpelier and Berry City, but emergency services out of Grand Isle County in Vermont and a nothing but boisterous Canadian taxi company. I can't make that up. There have been numerous occasions where our local responders could not be heard by our dispatchers due to that interference. This situation has blossomed into a significant safety issue for all public safety personnel throughout our organization. Because Central Vermont is within a certain kilometer distance of our international border, any change in our dispatch frequency would resolve, has to be taken and will take years to overcome. Our committee has worked with Burlington Communications, which is Vermont's radio specialists, for years to investigate an open frequency that we could use and then apply for with both the United States FCC and in Canada, the Industry Canada, which is the Canadian version of the SEC, to apply for a separate frequency for all of our towers. Finally, our current system only allows transmissions and receipts of signals to each individual tower, meaning that each of our dispatchers have a vast area of coverage, but they can only talk to one tower at one time. This means that agencies in our peripheral coverage areas such as Waterbury or Roxbury, Fiston or Walden may not hear, know or be aware of serious incidents that are happening. This creates instances of interference with communication, lessened awareness and decreased in safety. In May two thousand and fourteen, the Communications Committee of the Capital Fire Mutual Aid System provided a report to all of our members and all of our departments, outlining that our radio technology desperately needed to be upgraded. Six years ago, this report was updated and provided to all these members, both in person and through the distribution of our meeting minutes. It outlined the committee's work to identify the challenges of our technology and then points of failure within our system and recommendations for techno- technical experts at the Burlington Communications on how to fix this problem. The committee was provided a recommendation and a quote for a Motorola system upgrade. That quote was more than one point four million dollars. Knowing that this was an exuberant cost that was way too expensive for our communities, our committee changed its focus to make small incremental steps to get closer to our goal while seeking alternative solutions. An example of this work is our continued transition to all ELAN circuits throughout our towers via consolidated communications. This past winter, our committee had the opportunity to meet and collaborate with various mutual aid organizations throughout Vermont and New Hampshire. We learned that a similar-sized organization with a similar number of towers, departments and topography had successfully installed a brand-new Harrison Tate radio system at a price that was significantly less than what we were quoted. With the help of Dispatch Supervisor Fred Cummings, the committee was able to work with Burlington Communications to obtain an updated bid for Harrison Tate Upgrade Project. This bid was significantly less than before, at just above three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It was a cost savings of over one million dollars. With this knowledge, the committee continued to work to determine how best to share the information, develop a plan and create a proposal. The committee presented all of our information at our meetings in September and November and a plan was developed. This plan recommended that all agencies served by Capital Fire Mutual Aid through Montpelier Dispatching and Berry City Dispatching have one equal payment for all services. And that this payment would be spread over a period of ten years, which would result in a cost of two thousand five hundred dollars annually. So you may be asking, what does this project do for us, the City of Montpelier? The project will replace and update all transmitters currently being used for Fire and EMS dispatching by both the Montpelier Police Department and the Berry City Police Department. Furthermore, it will add an additional tower in Montpelier on Hill Street and a tower at the Berry City Auditorium. Finally, it will move the tower from the Waitsfield Fire Station to Mount Lincoln to provide better coverage of the Mad River Valley area. All towers will be linked via an ELAN E-line system. It will be a voted simulcast system. This means that every transmission from a dispatcher will be simultaneously heard and transmitted throughout our coverage area on every tower. And that every transmission received from a responder on that system will also be simultaneously transmitted on every tower throughout the system. Responders will not only gain awareness of the system emergencies, but gain the capability to communicate vast and wide throughout our organization and region. This impact will greatly improve coordination and cooperation throughout our public safety agencies. And most importantly, we will be able to move to a new isolated frequency that will no longer have to compete for use and interference. As everyone can see, this will vastly improve Fire and EMS communications throughout Central Vermont at a very shared, minimalized cost. To upgrade each of our towers, it would cost roughly approximately forty-five thousand dollars each. For a single town or city to accomplish this same increase in coverage, they would need to expend twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars more than what we are pro- proposing tonight to cooperatively do over a ten-year period. In return, Fire and EMS services served by Montpelier Police and Berry City Police will improve in coverage, capability and safety throughout our system. Their responders will be able to coordinate and communicate with these other responders, no matter their location. The service area will have better notification power due to multiple towers simultaneously transmitting. And finally, we'll bring our aging technology from the nineteen eighties to the twenty-first century. Sadly, there are some individuals that claim that our Communications Committee has developed this project without transparency or behind closed doors. Unfortunately, nothing could be further from the truth. The radio project and its progress has been reported, upgraded and shared with every member of the Capital Fire Mutual Aid System over a dozen times in the past eight years. The city and towns with the various departments have representation throughout our work. It has taken years upon years to get to where we are today and we are energetic to be near the finish line and see our system that will finally address communication issues, challenges and failures throughout Central Vermont. Our timeline is to complete agency commitments by December twenty twenty. In this coming spring, we would obtain municipal financing through to allow project purchase of equipment. And we hope to be shovel-ready by July two thousand and twenty-one with a hopeful go-live date of Labor Day. To help in this process, again, we are asking each agency in their towns to serve and commit a payment of twenty-five hundred dollars annually for the next ten years. Again, thank you for the time of listening. Thank you for telling me, read this statement. The rest of the committee and I are here at this meeting and be glad to answer any questions you may have. And thank you, Madam Mayor, for giving your moment of your time.
Great, thank you. That, um, that was very helpful and, um, very clear. So just so that I am aware, are you, uh, are you all asking us for a commitment of this money tonight? Mike, well.
We recognize that that commitment would not only take through, uh, January, but also through, uh, approval of town meeting in two thousand and twenty-one. So there's no way to expect that fully commitment until the public gets attains the vote, of course. But, uh, the intention is to include in that budget, in, in the budgets and wait for, uh, the various towns and cities' approval uh, through the budget process, which will have to have done this ring.
Okay, thank you. That, that makes sense. I, I would love to start by, uh, getting comments on this from our, uh, from our fire chief. You have any thoughts or comments?
Sure, um, certainly is an exciting project. Um, I'm hearing a lot of this, I'm getting caught up to speed also, just like you are. Um, and I would, it'd be great, Scott, uh, this is for Scott or Paul, if you could send out a, um, a plan, a scope of work. I, I have seen the, um, quotes for the equipment. It would be nice to be able to review a, a plan and, and a scope of work that also includes the, um, expected outcomes from the, I have not seen that yet. And, and, you know, and, and, you know, before I could make a confirmed, you know, firm recommendations of the city about the project, I would like to see that and review that. Additionally, I have a, a question on, um, the funding of the pro- plan. The, the, the quotes I have seen are, as you mentioned, three hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars to do the project. And the plan is, um, to divide that over, um, at twenty-five thousand dollars for eighteen towns. So eighteen towns would commit twenty-five thousand dollars over ten years. That comes to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So is there a thought on the additional hundred thousand dollars?
What is not included in that quote from Burlington Communications is the equipment and setting up the ELAN uh, to the individual towers. Capital Fire has accomplished four of the eight towers, but an additional four towers would need to be connected via consolidated communications. And the cost of that engineering and connection can be up to ten to fifteen thousand dollars. That's some of the start, the small process that we have been over the last eight years to try to take one step further and further. So what the quote you have from Burlington Communications is a large part, but is not the total part of the project.
Okay, so, so I think it would be helpful, especially for me, is, you know, I prepare a recommendation for the City of Montpelier that all of that is included, so we, so that we can see the totality of the project and the funding that's gonna be involved in it.
Sure, I've asked for those additional costs from Consolidated Communications and have yet to receive them, but we'll share as soon as I do. My hope is to get it in the next couple of weeks, because I know this is budget time.
Okay.
Um, Bill, go ahead.
And, uh, thanks, Scott. I just have two quick questions. One, um, could you send us the text that you read? Could you just email it to me or something, so we have, you have your statement?
Be glad to.
Yeah, thank you. And secondly, um, just more to Bob's question about cost. I'm just curious, you know, you're spreading this out over ten years, do, do those numbers include financing costs as well, interest rates and that?
Yes, it does. And we also are committing that there will not be an increase to those costs to the, over the ten years. What, what is the, what we're asking for right now is going to be the same at year four, year eight. That, that will not increase, uh, that the twenty-five hundred is the total each year for ten years.
And Scott, on another question, um, does the vendor, I think it's Harris is the vendor, do they have any concerns with financing radio equipment over a ten-year period? You know, ten years is a long time for.
Uh, in speaking, sure, chief, uh, in speaking with the Burlington Communications and we ran this plan as a committee through them, which would be, uh, they're the, um, the technician, the company that is, uh, through Harrison Tate. Uh, they have no concerns with having a ten-year, uh, payment plan and, uh, with this, um, financial plan. They hadn't, uh, Todd at Burlington Communications had no concerns.
All right. And Mayor, I think, um, it's an exciting project that we should continue to explore and, um, and gather more information from the committee on some of our questions on, um, funding and.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, Chief Pete?
Good afternoon or good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Hello. Uh, I just, if I can also say this, and when, when I got here, we've been, uh, I've been having these conversations. Fred Cummings has been giving me heads-up notifications of this. I've seen the emails going back and forth, seeing what the quotes were. Um, I, I, I was prepared to, this would not be an additional twenty-five hundred dollar cost that we're gonna be adding, asking for in addition to, uh, existing budgets. We're gonna find it someplace within our budget to pay for. They've approved.
Okay, great. That's helpful. Um, any questions from council? Uh, Dan, go ahead.
Uh, I, I, I had one question as far as, um, a commitment goes. You know, we have limited, uh, ability to commit, and I think actually Chief Pete's comment is kind of an interesting one, which is, you know, if, if in fact Montpelier said, this is a great idea, uh, and signed on to it and started, uh, making payments and out of the police budget, but then, uh, five years from now, the police budget decides to cut back, we're not really using the system or against it, what's to stop? the system or against it, what's to stop us or any other town from leaving this, this commitment?
That's a great question, Dan, and I appreciate you asking it. We are working with Paul Giuliani to come up with a, a language that could be a partnership between the eighteen different agencies and towns to help meet that, but ultimately, if a city or town five years from now says, we're just not going to do it, I, I don't think that. Well, I, I'm going to be in my area of, I'm out of my area of expertise, and I would actually have to look at you, you or the City Council for a recommendation. But I would state that our towns and cities have received dispatching in a partnership for a good thirty years. So I don't prospect that that would happen. But I'm not sure I have a hundred percent recommendation without getting Paul Giuliani as a recommendation for, from the Capital Fire Mutual Aid example. I'm sorry, I can't come up with a better answer than that.
That's, that's okay. That's helpful. And you know, my, my concern is really, I think in a lot of these, in, in a lot of the, the partner towns where the budgets come under line items, come under more scrutiny sometimes. My concern is that if there is for some reason a political turnover in one or two or three towns, that can really leave, and it wouldn't just leave Montpelier in a situation that would leave you and the other partner towns in a situation. I mean, we see this with the library, for example. Not, not everyone supports the library every year, even though it seems like something we all benefit from. And that's certainly a concern in getting into this type of long-term venture where it sounds like you're not proposing to bond for this. It's really just something Burlington Communications is willing to finance, essentially, this sort of delayed payment. And knowing how political winds change in ten years, it's, it seems like a, a question that we may need more information on, or at least I, I would want more. The second question I have is, is as far as maintenance of the system. Would that be put into the CFM AS budget? Or I mean, would there be another expectation that we would be putting additional money to maintain this system as a partner?
Great question. The answer is no, you would not be asked for additional funds or monies for the maintenance of this. We have included it not only in the building up, but the annual, the monthly or the annual payment for E-LAN circuits had been included in the cost for projection out the ten years from Consolidated Communications. So there is no expected increase or for maintenance or upkeep of this system, that that's all within this project cost.
Donna, go ahead.
Thank you, and thank you, Scott, for laying out so much information and all those in attendance. In dealing with the finances, I know Tom Galanca was very concerned, both as a Montpelier City Council member when he was here, as well as a board member of the Public Safety Authority, that financing was the one thing that's very weak about the Capital Fire Mutual Aid grouping in, in your bylaws. And so he always felt it was a weak spot of which the Center for Vermont Public Safety Authority could support you in. And one of the reasons of which extending Capitol West membership was to help give you that, because the authority can bond. And so we were surprised that we didn't know about this until, in fact, I asked Bill to bring this up because I wanted to know what Bill and Brian, Pete knew, because we didn't know. Public Safety Authority did not realize how far along you were with your vendor. In fact, under your guidance and members of your organization on the Public Safety Authority Board, as well as Barry and Montpelier, we went ahead with a large RFP because that's what we were told people wanted to do, not just fix the equipment now, but actually do a full need assessment. And so we did that. And when you all came to our last meeting, October twenty-ninth, members from Capitol West, Brian, members from Berry City, it was very clear that you no longer wanted to do that need assessment. In fact, you asked us to give you our money that we were going to spend on the need assessment to help support your equipment. So I'm, I'm just disappointed, I guess, that we couldn't use the resources to help strengthen what you need, but also look ahead, whether or not in ten years this equipment is going to be where we want it to be, how much of an upgrade it'll need or change. Can, can you talk at all about that? One is the financing. I mean, who actually signs the dotted line with Harris Equipment? And two, looking beyond just the vendor's opinion, you had one vendor, this is their opinion to solve the problems versus doing a true inventory where all the towns are, what they have, what they need, and a bigger picture of where we can go with broadband, cellular, and not just radios.
I think you hit on the, the, the point at the very final of your, your, your question there in that our focus is on public safety, fire, and EMS communications. We are not attempting to address cellular or broadband technologies, nor would we. That is not the, within our scope of our public safety, nor in the mission of the Capital Fire Mutual Aid System. We are, as a municipal corporation, able to secure funding for this project. And we have, once we have the intention, I would say, and commitment is a strong word, but the intentions of the eighteen towns to move forward, we will secure that funding through different avenues that we're pursuing to make sure that it's most cost-effective for the eighteen different towns. I, I don't think that we were anywhere hidden, that this is something we've been working on even before our joining a Capital Fire Mutual, or excuse me, Center for Vermont Public Safety Authority. And I don't believe that we have ever asked for money from CBPSA. I, I am a little perplexed on maybe, and maybe I misunderstood, so if I am, I apologize. But I know we are not asking for money from CBPSA. I think that we do have our members of the Public Safety Authority who are here, who were at the meetings, both in Sally Dillon and William Schwartz, who, if they would like to provide feedback of what their input was over the last year or two, I think we'd be benefit to hear from them. Sally, would you like to go first?
Sure. Yeah, I don't recall Donna us asking for money for the equipment.
I'm sorry, it was just at this last meeting, October twenty-ninth, that it was very clear people felt it was a better use of the money to, to buy toward the, towards the, put this money towards the project ready to go versus doing a need assessment. So it wasn't from you, Sally.
Okay.
Sally, do you have anything you want to add, or Will, do you want to add?
I don't think I have anything to add. I mean, I, I feel like, I know a couple meetings ago, Donna, you had asked where we were at with our simulcast system. And I think I did say at that time that we did have a quote and we were working on it, and you asked what our future was with CBPSA. And I said we had a meeting coming up, and at that time I didn't know, which was, was the truth. I did not know what our, our future was going to be.
Will, is there anything you would like to add? Maybe we don't have Will.
No, I'm not seeing a Will.
He was on earlier. He may have fallen off. I apologize. Oh, there you go, Will. Go ahead.
Yeah, no, you know, it's important to remember that when Capital Fire joined CBPSA, the, the intent was to see if we could get a single-site dispatch center to fly. And, and for whatever reason, that never really gained a lot of traction in Barry or Montpelier or, or really anywhere else. But it was, it was a good study. The needs assessment is, is very broad in scope with the cellular and the broadband and all that stuff. What, it's important to remember that what Capital Fire is, is really trying to do here, folks, is simply to improve radio communications. That's it. Cellular, broadband, all that stuff is, is, and Scott put it perfectly, it's, it's beyond what we do. We need to improve radio communications in our area, and we've been working on this for well over a decade.
Okay. Thank you for that. Other thoughts or comments?
There are a couple more questions if.
Sure, go ahead.
Scott, and it's again for you, Scott, and I apologize for not getting this to you earlier. But the, the plan calls for switching radio channels, which would require every radio in the, in the district, in Capitol, to, to be reprogrammed. Every portable, every, every, everybody's radio, is there any money in the plan to assist with that? Or would individual towns and cities be responsible for that on their own?
Yes, we have developed, and I had, I had asked this question by a couple fire departments a couple weeks back. And I sharpened up the pencil to make sure that Burlington Communications maybe could provide a generalized assistance in, in reprogramming portable and truck radios to help with that. Now Burlington Communications won't go to every twenty-three different agencies, but they are going to, and we're willing to set up regionalized areas where if the department would bring them the radios at the cost of Capital Fire Mutual Aid, we would help get their program. There probably is a small amount of expense for individual departments that maybe may not kind of meet those regional, but those expenses would probably be very, very minimal, as most of us have either, whether Motorola, Kenwood, or similar radios that could be easily programmed and set up. So yes, we have included some of our funds into helping program the truck radios and the portable radios.
Okay, thank, that, thanks for that. And, you know, and, you know, managing an apartment that has thirty radios, there would be quite an expense there. And then my, my other question is, if not all eighteen towns decide to join, it kind of, it kind of goes to Dan's question, but if, if not everyone joins this now, what, what's the future of the, of your, of your system?
That's a great question. The eighteen towns, if we, if we have one town or city that decides they just do not want to participate, we could get to the seventeen towns and be able to make it work. It would be very tight, but we would be able to make it work. If two towns or cities decided not to participate, we would then have to cut back by a tower and cut costs to make that work for the towns or cities. We are not proposing that there would be an increase in what we're asking for. So we're not going to be coming back in the spring and say, okay, I need another five hundred dollars. That's not reasonable. So if multiple towns say, do they do not want to participate, we are going to circle back and come up with a better plan. But we are hoping that our work has demonstrated that I think this is the best opportunity for all of our communities.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Scott.
Anytime, Chief.
Any questions? Any public?
Madam Mayor, Stephen Whitaker here.
Go ahead.
So I'd like to tie a couple of threads together here. This council voted a motion some many months back to ask CBPSA to work closely with CV fiber and explore the efficiencies that could be gained there. I have similarly encouraged that that planning be extended to the radio system. So this, to be proposing or considering a system that doesn't go out to bid for radios, doesn't go out to bid for fiber circuits is questionable, to put it mildly. Especially when we could potentially provide either primary or failover diverse routes to these towers. As far as I've seen, and I've done extensive public records requests related to this project and, and see Capital Fire, no modeling of failure modes for what if an ice storm or a hurricane takes down one, two, three, or four of the eight proposed towers, who's going to be left with no ability to communicate? That kind of planning needs to be done. The assertion that broadband and cellular have nothing to do with public safety is really not consistent with the National Association's trends and trade press. That much of what modern public safety, especially for responding officers, relies upon broadband or locational awareness. If, if a man goes or a firefighter goes into a burning building and communications is lost, the type of cellular GPS that is used to try to locate that person. Similarly, vehicle location, video, pre-arrival, all kinds of stuff is going to require on, require broadband and LTE. And that's why the CBPSA needs assessment is, is properly examining the LTE coverage, the public safety LMR coverage, the radio coverage that they're talking about, as well as the brought, you know, broadband capability and fiber for backhaul. But this plan, in my review, is kind of half-baked in that it ignores several of the technologies that are emerging and necessary. And it has not been done transparently. Since two thousand and eighteen, I have been requesting the minutes and agendas and notice of meetings of this Communications Committee. I was told in two thousand and eighteen, at the end of an extensive public records request, where I did get minutes of the Capital Fire general membership meetings, that they acknowledged they had not been keeping minutes of the Communications Committee and that they would correct that going forward. Two years have passed, I've done additional requests, and there are still no minutes of the Communications Committee. So this is, and it's, it's worse than that. I've asked for the, the financial projections of this expense and the payments. These public records requests are being ignored. I, I don't, I guess I'd rather like meet privately with Dan and Donna and try to help explain how exhaustive, I've got a great paper trail, how exhausted my efforts to shine a light on and try to persuade these folks to do a more integrated and inclusive planning process with CBPSA. And this entire radio system was, you know, done in the dark in this Communications Committee with no meetings warned, with no minutes, precisely while, after the, the Capital Fire Mutual Aid had joined the Board of CBPSA. So to me, that's bad faith, and it has really poisoned the dialogue right now. So we, I also need the City Council, the full council, to recognize that Montpelier, as the beneficiary of the revenues from Capital Fire member, members, over three hundred thousand a year supporting our dispatch facility, has a vested interest, if not a conflict, in really honestly debating what kind of system we need, when should it be competitively bid, or should we really get serious about a regional system that we, Montpelier won't control, but will be a beneficiary of and may even operate. But it can't be a single site. It needs to have a failover option. And that kind of planning is initiated but not been completed. And part of the reason it hasn't been completed is because we've had this effort to sustain the status quo, maintain the status quo, no matter how deficient its planning or its transparency or accountability has been. So I, I'd be happy to provide more detail. I don't think this is the right form for it. But you know how thorough and tenacious I am, and I have my ducks in a row in my paperwork. and I have my ducks in a row and my paperwork in order. Well, I'll, I'll, I'll suggest that you continue to ask questions and you possibly form a subcommittee. You almost have one in your delegates to the Capitol Fire. I mean, the, I think if, if, if Chief Gallants were to sit down with Donna and Dan and really examine what CBPSA is doing and whether or not there's hope to collaborate and/or get a complete plan before these decisions are made, that's probably one strategy to consider. I'll, I'll stop there before I insult somebody.
Thank you, Stephen. Jack, go ahead. And then if anyone would like to respond to those comments, that's fine too. Jack, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm glad Steve was here because he knows more about this stuff than, than I do. But I think he, he put together some of the thoughts that I had, which is that this, this, moving forward with this plan doesn't seem to address the issues of fragmentation of services and not covering the whole range of emergency communications that, that the Central Vermont Public Safety Authority is, is trying to address. And so I, as a total amateur at this stuff, as most of us on the council are, I really don't know how to evaluate what we should be doing. $2,500 a year for 10 years seems like what we can find from the couch cushions if we really needed to. And so that's attractive for, for the price alone. But on the other hand, it seems as though we are, we're not addressing some of the real needs that we have. And so I don't know who we should be getting the guidance from. I would like to have CBPSA as part of this conversation. And of course, I would rely heavily on the expertise of, of our, of our departments in Montpelier as, as we think about how to go forward. But, so I don't have an answer, it's just questions.
Fair enough, thank you. Would Scott, Paul, Sally, like to address any of the comments that remain?
I believe, yeah, I believe Mr. Whitaker and our committee have differences of opinion. And some of those comments that Mr. Whitaker has said, even as recently in the Times Argus have, well, they say for themselves. I think our focus is not on that. Our focus is on really trying to improve fire and EMS communications. I'm sorry, I'm in a room that my lights just went out, there we go. We, we are not going to be able to reach broadband or GPS or those, those services. We have communities that have no cellular coverage right now. And the, to accomplish that is a lofty goal, something that we're not against and we're not preventing for an evaluation and the RFP to, to consider that. We're not recommending against that. But what this does do is it focuses on what our members, our firefighters, our EMTs need now. And that is an improvement to our current system and moving it forward. And I think that's where we've worked very hard and diligently to come to. And we have been coordinating this with police department leadership, dispatcher supervisor Cummings. And our committee have really been focusing on how to improve the radio infrastructure we have now. Not necessarily what could be there in 10 to 20 years, but what we need today to make our, our responders both capable and safe.
Thank you. Bill, go ahead.
I just have a question. And I, you know, I, I'm like, Jack, I don't really understand this stuff at all. And, and I'm not even sure that it needs, or, or anyone can answer this right now, but I'll throw it out for people to think about. Does, let's say, we went forward with the plan that, that's been presented tonight. Does that preclude the other opportunities? In other words, could, could it be improved or enhanced in the future to include the types of things that Steve and others are talking about? Or is this, is it sort of an either or?
No, we, I wouldn't imagine that it would be in either or. That it looks at where we are currently in the recommendations of bringing our tel, our technology to today. I cannot predict what technology will be in five, 10 years and how that can vastly improve communications, both public safety and public communications throughout. But our system will, it will be adaptable and able to grow to those new technologies when it is. It is not an either or, nor are we recommending that this project being either or to the work that CBPSA is doing and the RFP that they have. We're not, we're not recommending against that. Matter of fact, we see that there could be some strong benefit to that. And looking at all the various different capabilities and communications out there. So this certainly can be adapted and can be grown upon, both as a, for our communities and if any of other communities want to join us as well.
Um, yeah, I'm going to let our, actually, go ahead, Paul, and then we'll get to.
I'll be sure, just speaking from someone out in the woods, one of my problems with Mr. Whitaker's thing is that we have no cell towers. The communities we cover have no cell towers. We have no LTE, IT, any TE. When I walk out my door, I no longer have cell coverage. So any system that relies on cellular or anything that requires data simply will not work for us. Talking to AT&amp;T, who's the vendor for FirstNet for the cell service, we're not even on the radar for the next 10 years in our areas for cell coverage. So, so speaking from out in the woods, I just don't see that as an option. And I, and I would reiterate the same thing Scott said. As far as governance or who operates this system moving forward 10 years, someone else could drive the system, it still would work. Or could it be connected to some future technology? I think yes. You know, and what I like to say sometimes is sometimes we let the perfect become the enemy of the good. And at this point, it, it's like we're driving around in almost a 40-year-old car and we're saying, well, it'd really be nice to get a car that's going to be 10 years away, but the car we have now is broken. And speaking in our area, we have major lapses in coverage. There's, there's problems for us many times with, dispatchers are very busy in having to switch towers. And so transmissions are sometimes, this is not meant as a bad comment or the dispatches, but if you have to constantly switch between eight towers, there's huge gaps for problems. And as a fire chief, you know, I, I go by the Gordon Graham saying predictable is preventable. If you can predict that a disaster is going to happen, then we can prevent it happening. This does that in our radio communications. And it's a really big deal to those of us kind of on the outlying areas where, where if they use the wrong tower by accident, we simply miss the tone. We don't get the call, or I have 11 firefighters that don't show up. So it's not, it's not, what could happen is what does happen. Sometimes I'll get to the station, there's just me. And then what happened, oh, wrong tower, try it again. And then you're, you're seven or eight minutes behind. And as we all know, fires don't wait for us, or EMS calls don't wait for us. So, so I really would encourage the board to take a look at this in what it's trying to do. It's trying to fix our current problem. And I don't think it makes it so we can't morph to something better or alter this in the future. I don't know, I'm not an expert in this field. And for relatively low cost, and I was quite pleased about the low cost. Anyway, that's all I have, and, and I'll turn my mic back off again here.
Thank you, Paul. And go ahead, Chief Pete.
Thank you, ma'am. It just, you know, there are technical aspects to this. And, you know, a few articles, reading a few articles here and there about what locations are doing. There are geographic challenges to some of these things. And the other part of it is like, as far as like broadband and that type of technology, it's not something necessarily that the municipality can control. That's, that's entirely up to as far as like how that coverage is going to come into play where if there's a, if there's a way, right now, it's not feasible to look at things like LTE or those types of broadband systems to do this type of radio because of the hilly terrain that we're in. So when and if that technology improves to the way that's going to be extremely reliable to what is that we're doing, the other part of it is we have no control over whether AT&amp;T, Verizon, any of the rest of those service providers are going to bring that coverage up. There's nothing that we can do to control it, to manipulate that.
Thank you. Okay, any further questions about this? Obviously, we're going to need to talk about it again, but any other questions for right now?
Madam Chair, may I offer a couple of clarifying comments? The, this is Stephen Whitaker.
Very briefly, go ahead, Steve.
The, the economy of scope, there's some clear misunderstandings. Virtually none of the folks that are speaking and promoting the Capitol Fire radio plan are experts in this technology, and they've all admitted so. So they're entirely reliant upon consolidated communications as a sole source vendor and Burlington Communications as a sole source radio vendor. And that is the reason why CBPSA, having an independent engineering firm without any vested interest in selling any equipment, who does understand cellular? The, the belief that we don't have anything to say about cellular deployment is absurd. In fact, there is a, CV fiber had already paid an engineering firm to do a broadband, wireless broadband plan for Central Vermont infill that would include LTE coverage. And so it, it's well within our grasp to fill the dead zones in the cellular canopy. And not only that, to achieve significant cost savings by aligning the fiber use, the backhaul, the fiber that's needed to get to these towers for the simulcast system, might be the very same fiber, likely would be the very same fiber that's needed to hang small cells for LTE coverage. So this is where we can't afford to, you know, add everything as a change order to a Capitol Fire half-baked design in order to get this rest of the system built out. We need to design it and build the efficiencies in it from the start. And I'll, I'll leave it there.
Okay, thank you, Stephen. Any other final comments from folks?
Just thank you, Madam Mayor, for us and asking a lot of good questions. We certainly are going to continue to work with Chief Pete and Chief Gallants to finalize and come up with more information. And Chief Gallants, I plan to reach out tomorrow and see if we can answer all the questions as best I can.
Great, Jack, go ahead.
One last thing, I, I appreciate the presentation that we heard. And when we get this in writing, I suspect I'm not the only person who would find it helpful to have, have it accompanied by a glossary that tells us what all the initialisms and other technical terms mean.
I think it's important so that you understand what, what the money is going for and not be covered by technical wizardry or whatever the words may be to really to bring it to the knowledge that everybody can understand so that you can make a sound decision. That's certainly reasonable.
Yeah, and don't get me wrong, I'm not saying that this is being done at all to, to snow us or, or just put something through. It's just that when you're dealing with a field and every, every technical field has its own vocabulary, and people who aren't in the field don't, don't know it, know the vocabulary. And so that'd be helpful, thanks.
Sure, John.
Thank you. All right, well, and thanks again. That was, that was very helpful. All right, well, so we're going to move on. By the way, I'm anticipating taking a break at 8:30. Hope that is soon enough for folks. So for this next item, sorry, it's kind of a hard gear shift, switching topics. But yeah, so for this, for this next topic, the Confluence Park grant application, I think I'm turning it over to Kevin Casey, unless, Bill, you have anything you want to add first?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to turn this over to Kevin Casey.
So, good evening, everyone. We, we are asking tonight to actually, for sponsorship for an application to the Land Water Conservation Fund to fund the next phase of the Confluence Park. As you recall, Ricardo Erickson did a presentation for you, I believe it was last year, with the conceptual designs and council, like one that was called Concept. And I actually have that here if you want to refresh your memory. But, you know, we recognize that, you know, with, with all of the budget constraints of what's going on now, committing to another project, even though you already have committed to it in the past, and it's priority project, that, that, you know, there might be some trepidation. However, one of the good things about this grant application is that there's plenty of flexibility in identifying a match. We met again this morning and went through the potential funding sources and were making contact, sending letters of support. And I actually don't think that it's going to be too big of a stretch to get a good portion, if not all of the money, from multiple partners, from small to large. So this is, one of the things that we discussed with Bill and Kelly was that this is, it's, it's a, it's ripe to, to apply for this right now for a number of reasons. The one, you know, it's, we're applying for $300,000, which the city would have to match. And, you know, that's where the other partners come in, is that we can come up with the money to move the project forward. There's a fair amount of excitement and a fair amount of, of support from the folks who administer the, the grant. And VRC is, has done a lot of the heavy lifting. Steve Libby and Ricardo have really done a great job getting everything together. So we're just looking for kind of continued support to move this project forward. I'm excited about it because after I go through all of the potential grant funding sources for this, I like, I like what I'm seeing. We've got the, the conceptual plan, which is a great start. The, the LWCF funding will help phase, will help fund the second phase. You know, I'm sure you hear from Mike all the time, you know, plan, prepare, implement. And so we've done the planning on the conceptual side. So this is the preparing side. So this will help fund things like the engineering, final design, cost estimates, that type of thing. And then we get into implementation. And, you know, I'm looking at some of the funding sources and, you know, I think we can get there as well. So, yeah, it's, it's exciting. And if you have any questions, feel free, we just need the resolution signed. I don't know how that works now with Zoom, but I, I attached it tonight. With the, the application is due on the 14th of December. And we're, we're well on our way. So if you have any questions.
I just want to start off by saying thank you for that explanation because I certainly had a little sticker shock when I saw that. But knowing that it's not necessarily coming out of our general fund is very helpful.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. I was just going to say, there's the recognition that this is a, you know, we're probably three to five years out from, from, you know, that actually shovels in the ground. I mean, even when we look at it is that even if we were to get the funding approved, you know, we'd be in the planning stages next year and, you know, procuring the next phase of engineering and design. So there would be some money spent next year with a 50/50 match. But we're not talking about the, you know, $600 to a million that we would need to commit for implementation, you know, next year. So we're a few years away, and that's one of the things that we. You know, next year. So we're a few years away and that's one of the things that we kind of thought was, look. A lot of communities are holding back for this very reason, but we know that like this is a priority project. COVID isn't going to last forever. And if we can get our foot in the door and get get a good head start on the the planning and the preparing stages. You know, we're we're going to be in good shape when and if and hopefully this ends. So yeah, I think we're, I'm excited about this one.
Cool, Donna, go ahead.
Kevin, you answered part of the question. You said four or five years out for shovel ready. Is it indeed when the grant comes, it would arrive? When would we know? When would it? When do we have to start? It's like, how long is it alive? You know, how do you you have, how much time do you have before you spend it? All of that kind of timeline? Do you have any?
If that's part of the, that'll be a part of the application process, what our timeline is, but because this grant helps to fund the like design and engineering phases, it's pretty well recognized that, you know, you're looking at for something like this along the river. You know, you're a year to eighteen months from procurement of a contract, you know, from a procurement of a of an engineer to to completing a final report to, you know, reviewing the 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 cap and making sure that we have everything in place. So it it fits within the time for, you know, three to five years. I'd like it to be on the three side. You know, and I think that's reasonable considering the energy behind the projects. And you know, I think the only thing that's going to come up is that railroad. But
In the minutes is guaranteeing no general fund money, okay? But No, when would you know if you got it or not?
Steve, is it January that they?
Yeah, I think they make the 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 review process is during January, either late January or early February. I'd have to go back and look, but it's a pretty quick notification timeline.
I mean, to be fair and not to be cynical, but I'm gonna be, is that just the length of time it's taking the state right now to get our grant agreements processed? Just to give an example, we had the accessibility modification grant at the Calhoun Hubbard Library. That took almost a year. Just to get the grant agreement and it's just just waiting and, you know, COVID was a big part of that, but there was also just you know, they're shorter staffed and I think that that's just where we are. So I'm not particularly concerned that, you know. We get an award letter and then we will get a grant agreement within a week. I I've never seen it, so. Just me being cynical, yeah.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
Well, and if if it really came down to it and we were awarded the grant, but we really couldn't find the money anywhere, we don't have to accept the grants.
Yeah, that would be the other option too. And I and I I think, Steve, were you telling me was it? What was the other community? Was it Randolph or somebody else that actually got LCWF funding and could not come up with it and actually turn the grant back? Was it you or?
It wasn't me, Kevin. You know, we've had, we've had a couple of other projects, smaller ones in smaller towns where we worked with the municipality on LWCF funding and both of those were successful. So I, but I don't know about, you know, I'm sure there's procedures for if you just can't meet the match, which again, I agree, I think this is a very attractive project from a whole bunch of different funding perspectives.
And to be fair, is that like, I think that I could I could rattle some doors to get the planning and engineering funds from the other partners. I I think that there's enough interest and energy around this that if we had to come up with additional monies on the front side. I I think we could find those matches. So like if we're, you know, we need to come up with fifty thousand dollars pretty quickly. I don't see that as too much of a challenge. I think it's, I think it's out there.
Thank you. Jay and then Lauren.
Sorry. Obviously, I think it's important for me to to mention that if you haven't figured out Ricardo, who's been mentioned as my wife. In terms of just, you know, full disclosure here. Obviously, I'm very familiar with the steps of this project. And at this point, I feel comfortable being part of the conversation and part of the vote in terms of sort of moving it forward. Certainly is is nothing that we stand to gain any sort of financial gain from or is not. It's, you know, her work with VRC, this is just a part of her work with VRC. But I just wanted to make sure that, you know, I wanted to put that out there if others are uncomfortable with it. Then I'm I'm happy to hear that conversation or or your thoughts, but just just want to make sure that, you know, sharing that and this this project and this type of project, I think, is very important for the future of Montpelier. So I'm comfortable being part of the conversation right now, but just wanted to if if there was a a thought in terms of recusing myself for any vote that might happen tonight, I'm happy to hear those thoughts too.
Well, Jay, I was not thinking it. Let's other folks have comments, questions or concerns about that.
And I think this project preceded your time on the council. The city already committed.
Oh, definitely. Yeah, yeah, far, far, yeah, far preceded, for sure. Yeah, thanks, Kevin, yeah.
But thank you for bringing it up nonetheless. Lauren, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, first of all, I'm really excited. I feel like having like positive and optimistic things to look forward to for the city right now is is great and I'm so excited. It's not just being put on hold, but moving forward. So thanks for the work and keeping it going. My only question was, do you know if if like we do this LWCF grant now? Is there opportunity for implementation LWCF dollars or would this kind of be, is it like a one shot and you're, you probably can't get future funding, just knowing like they just, you know, expanded like the Great American Outdoors Act and obviously the Trump administration has not moved forward with it, but the new administration might. So there if there could be more funding in the future, like would love to make sure we're maximizing whatever opportunities there might be for both planning and implementation. So I was just curious if you knew anything about that.
Well, I think that, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, but these funds are going to kind of cross over from planning to implementation. Potentially like, you know, depending on where all the other funding sources come from and how that all all works out and what the actual cost estimates are. This can, that one of the advantages of this is that it can be used for the final design and engineering. That's the one thing that we always run into is that there's plenty of planning money for the front end of doing conceptual planning. But that middle stage of we need to find money for engineering and final design and where you start spending money isn't there for a lot of projects. And so this is, that's one of the reasons this is attractive, just kind of carried through that. You know, we met today and we identified some other opportunities. So that I'm following up on things like accessible, it's accessibility modification grants through CDVG. Which we just did one at the library for me. This this would would fit the bill. It's a city owned facility. And it is you know, this will make, this will modify it and give river access to people with disabilities. So you know, that would be one opportunity. Then we have opportunities for you know, recreation grants and then small grants for boat access and, you know, we identified probably in excess of ten or twelve funding sources, different priorities, you know, that that we've where we think we'll get money, but I'm encouraged and I, you know. I I'm not always one to to think that the money's there or that that it can be so quickly done, but I'm, I feel pretty confident on this one.
Great. Any further comments on this team or is there a motion? Oh, Lauren, go ahead.
One question, do you do you have a good sense of how likely we would be to get it and is anything like a letter to our congressional delegation who has a lot of appropriation sway and loves LWCF deeply? You know, is anything beyond from us to encourage or provide?
I'll let you know, I I, you know, in the past, what we might do is ask, you know, Anne to write a a letter, we'll prepare one and 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 so that we can, you know, kind of demonstrate that the city is a supporting, I mean, there's a resolution which says that you're supporting it, but even that letter of support is is great. We'll we'll always take those. But yeah, I don't, I don't Alec has had conversations with Justin Savage, manager of the grant, and there has been pretty good energy around it. So he's been pretty pretty confident going into it that that's it's well received. Steve, do you have anything to add on that one?
No, I I I think they're to congratulate Lauren's initial question, these are really our implementation grants and they allow for the pre, the, you know, the planning and engineering as a as a allowable cost. So it really is, the assumption is that you're coming in to to build a project and the magnitude of the grants. You know, reflect that. So I think, as Kevin said, this is really a kind of, you know, unusual funding situation where the implementation grant actually will pay for some of the front end work. So I I think that's a fair fair way to represent it is really is an implementation program.
Jack and then
I can add something too after Jack and Don.
Okay, sounds good.
A wise person told me one time and it might have been Bill, it might have been Mike Miller. That one of the things that, one of the things we look at in in this job is to, going forward, think about what ribbon cutting and groundbreaking you want to be at in five years because we have to start on that path now if we want to be there. And I think that
Yeah, that's not.
The ribbon cutting to something that will be such a great benefit to the city center when it happens is is going to be tremendous and I think we want to be moving in that direction now.
Well, and thanks to Steve and Ricardo, we're already a year into that five year path towards the ribbon cutting. So we're, we're in, we're in good shape.
So Jack, is that a motion I can second?
Yes, I'm moving, approve this.
I second it.
Fabulous. Alec.
I was just gonna add to the question of how likely we are to get it. The city has not gotten any LWCF funds in a long time and I know sometimes the state has a hard time giving money to Montpelier with these things, but I think the last time we might have gotten those funds was maybe for the rec fields, which was a long time ago in the nineties, maybe. And we, they actually turned us down a couple of years ago for a separate project. So maybe they're feeling bad about that too. So just based on that history, I think that improves our chances.
Okay, well, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Can you take it? One more, can you take a question?
Sure, go ahead, Stephen.
Yeah, Steve Whitaker, me, are we, are we defining the scope? Are we constrained by the scope? If and when the Raj project falls apart. Can that that Confluence Park was almost a token gesture and I think that we have a bigger opportunity here than we may be looking at now. And I will, I'm hoping that this application won't constrain our opportunity or imagination to expand the scope of this in the next year or two. So I just want to make sure that we're not locking in something that was at a different agenda when that the size of that Confluence Park was crafted.
Thank you, Stephen. And just to clarify, to my recollection, the Confluence Park project predates the hotel project. Any other comments or questions on that? Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. And opposed. Okay, super. Thank you so much for your continued work on this. I look forward to being at that ribbon cutting, maybe.
Reminder for the council that this is a resolution that needs to be signed. It's not electronically, so we'll probably be pestering you to figure that out.
Yeah, I sent it along, I sent it along with the with the paperwork to Mary. So it might
Mary will be badgering you, but this one will actually require a probably visit.
Well, my good happen.
All right, thanks. Thanks, everyone. Have a great night.
Thank you. It is eight twenty three. I think it's probably time to take a break. So I'll see you all in about ten minutes. Awesome. So like eight thirty three ballpark. A discussion of twelve Main Street. Hospital acquisition of, Bill, go ahead.
Yeah, sure. Hopefully, this won't be too terribly complicated. We've talked about this a few times. We're trying to refer to the properties twelve main as opposed to, you know, Moat or TKS or something there. Those are the former owners. As you know, the city purchased the three properties from from the Vermont Association for the Blind and Visually Impaired, Moat and TKS as part of the one Taylor project to for the bike path and the road access into the back parking lot. At the time of the purchase, we had negotiated a buy and sell, so we would be buying the Moat property and Moat would be buying the TKS property, which we had purchased previously. And all this money had been purchased with federal funds through our our grant project for transportation purposes. In order to to execute the sale with Moat. Vtrans had to declare that portion of the property as non-essential to the project. We were on board with that because we wanted to execute the sale. We were looking forward to a private development building there and it was our way to move the project forward. Literally, it was either at the closing or the day before the closing, very close to finishing it. Moat Trust said, you know what, we think we'll just sell you our property at the appraised value and not do, not do this double, you know, buy and sell. So that was fine. That allowed us to still purchase that property, still stay on on track. However, that meant that the property, the I can't really call it the former TKS property because we've since reconfigured them. There were three lots, now there are two. But it was always clear that any sale would require repayment to the state for the the federal share that had been put in for one hundred and thirty four thousand. Some of you may recall that then there was a discussion ensued about what to do with this property since now we didn't have to build a building. Should it be open space? Should it be something else? We convened a group to talk about it and that ultimately got folded into the downtown master plan. And at all times, it was clear that this repayment needed to be made, that even if it were going to be built into a park and in fact, it was even considered as sort of a Confluence Park on this side of the river as well to complement the one where we just talked about. And it was always clear that if that were to happen, you had to, you know, put this extra money into the project to pay off the state. And so, as some of you may recall, around late January, it was right at the end, we had just finished our budget process, unfortunately, it might have been the last night. The state said, you know, it's been enough time, we could use the money back to to match, you know, federal funds and understandable, they're not, you know, they're acting in good faith here too. So they had given us a deadline of actually yesterday, December first, to pay our share in full or make some other decision. And as you recall, the decisions were the city And as you recall, the decisions were the city could, could pay what's owed in full. And then we would own all interests in the property going forward. When we would have full control over its use, if we chose to sell it privately, there would be no strings attached. We would keep any profit or loss for the sale of that property. Another choice was to sell it in conjunction with the state. So they would put it out to a bid through a public process. And any proceeds over the one thirty-four would be kept by the state. Any sale that was under one thirty-four, the city would bear that, have to pay the difference. You know, for any loss to, to the state to make sure they stayed whole. So in that case, we, we had the risk of the loss, but no benefit of the gain. And then the third possibility was to just let it lapse to the state. And they could do whatever they saw fit with it, sell it themselves or or put in a state facility or, or do, do whatever they might see fit to do with it. Presumably something transportation related, since it was purchased with safe transportation money. So you, the council, we talked this, I think in June, and you expressed the preference for us to buy it and to see if we could figure out a way to do so. As you recall, it was also in the middle of the COVID and, you know, the thought of us coming up with a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars to do this was daunting, but at the same time, it seemed like a good opportunity to own and control the process. So we've been back and forth with the state about this. They, you know, I think work, we worked cooperatively with us. And ultimately, they, they said to us that they would allow us to split the payment over two years. And rather than it being due, the first installment being due yesterday, it would not be due until June thirty, as long as it was within this fiscal year. So at some point in this fiscal year, we would open the first half, they would not charge interest. And the second half would be due during the next fiscal year, so sometime before June thirty, twenty twenty-two. So it's a two payments of sixty-seven thousand. So we've built the second payment into the proposed budget for next year. And the first payment, we would have to find under our current funds and monitoring that. So, but we think we can do that, particularly since we would be purchasing an asset. So it's our, you know, that's the base, the background, those are the issues. It's my recommendation that we move forward with this arrangement that the state has provided and that you authorize me to make the final negotiations and we make that happen. We're certainly happy to answer any questions and any comments. But again, I think, I know we've talked about this before.
Connor, go ahead.
I, I'd just say, I, I, I think it was a good idea back then. I think it's still a good idea, you know, we're skint, but there's like that expression, define or be defined. I'd rather define what that spot looks like right in our downtown than let somebody else do it. So I think we gotta, we gotta suck it up and, and do it.
Other comments? Dan, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want, one question. I think last time we talked about this and I'm just not recalling. Do we have a valuation for this lot?
So we did, the, it was well in excess of, of this amount. So, so one of the things that's unusual is that, so the state's actually being very, like you said, they've been great. We purchased the, the TKS lot for one sixty-something. I'd have to go do the math, but to the point of which the one thirty-four was the federal share. So whatever the difference was our share. And we have since taken that lot and combined it, like I said, it's not the same lot that it was that we purchased. So at one point, we looked at that lot, it would have an encumbrance of a road across it. So, but it also could potentially come with parking on the other side of the road. And I believe that the price that we had come up with for Moat to buy it at, which also had to be at fair market value, was like three thirty-four or something in that range. So, I mean, I, I think it's a, you know, it's a good risk. I, I mean, selling it would mean, obviously, we'd be giving up the, the property right on Main Street and it would mean, the chances are high that someone buying it would want to buy the parking with it. Although perhaps we could sell them without the parking with some sort of longer term parking arrangement. And if the garage are going to come in, maybe that's close enough, right over the bridge, parking garage. So, you know, we, we'd have to see. But I think just as a, as a financial move, it makes sense. And for controlling our own destiny, it makes sense.
No, I, I, I share those thoughts. I mean, my, my concern and the question is, is that it's always good to control your own destiny, but at what price? But what this says to me is that, that even if we weren't all that concerned about the destiny, if it was, you know, a, a less prominent lot, this is still a good investment for the city to make. And given all these other factors, it, it really makes sense. I mean, it's almost foolish not to, not to invest in that, not to be able to control that lot and how it's developed. And purchasing it, as I understand it, doesn't limit any of those resources. So if, for example, tomorrow, or, you know, and after we purchase this, a developer comes in and says, I've got this great idea for a lot. And we, you know, a building there, and we, we agree as a city, then we have that option to do that. Because I know the Moat proposal was a good proposal. It just wasn't necessarily one that was going to work, but it wasn't a perfect proposal. There were certainly issues with it that were still needing to be worked out. I remember I'm reviewing it on the DRB. So this is, this is really important. And given its prominent place in the entrance to our downtown, you know, this seems like a no brainer in some, some ways, so.
And it, and it was identified, I think, in the downtown master plan as, you know, a good location for commercial development. It wasn't necessarily flagged as open space, but that's still we can make in the future.
Donna, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion, and I know sometimes you'd like everyone to talk first, but they can talk after me. So I'd like to make the motion to authorize the city manager to finalize and execute the 12 Main Street former TKS Moat property, a reimbursement with the State of Vermont Agency of Transportation as per the terms described below.
Second.
Okay, motion to second, any further discussion? Jack, go ahead.
I agree with what's been said. I think that the, we've seen the proposal that, that looked pretty good. I'm not sold on the idea that it has to be open space. I think that you know, there's not that many opportunities to get public control of a site like this, right in the center of town. And to have great, a great degree of control over what happens to it. And so I think it is a great opportunity for the city. A question I have about the, about the money, you know, I, I appreciate that, that you're thinking that we could come up with the sixty-seven thousand dollars between now and the end of June. Is this the kind of purchase where if we conclude we do not have the cash on hand, that we can take out a mortgage to to do that?
So normally, yes. If the, if the landowner was willing to basically like take back the mortgages themselves and, and have the land be the collateral. Is it, in other words, we can't borrow against the full faith and credit of the city unless we have a vote of the public.
Okay.
But if it was a, you know, if it was secured by the real estate, it's possible that we could do that. I mean, I think we would be paying off the second half of it next year anyway, presumably, if it stays in the budget. And we think, we think we can do it, but this year. But, you know, so we, we could look at financing it, but I think it's cleaner for us, the sooner we can get it done, the better.
Oh yeah, I totally agree. I'm just thinking, is that an alternative if faced with the necessity? Thank you.
Maybe. I mean, I'd want to, I'd want to work that one through with an attorney more closely, but I think
Okay. All right, any further discussion?
May, Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Go for it.
The, when, when will the actual ability to change, potentially change the lot line stake effect? Will that be twenty twenty-two after the second payment is made to the state? Because that problem, we, we created a problem of truck access to that rear lot. And I know that our public works director has, you know, prior to COVID, been trying to help resolve it. But the problem is that the, the way that lot is configured and that parking lot granite curb, the trucks cannot get in through there. They could go in through that way and exit through the alley by Jacob's property. But we still have this problem with semis parking in the travel lanes of Main Street. It needs to be resolved, and this is an opportunity to resolve it if we have control. And the discussion to change the lot lines and/or designate some of that rear parking radius to essential commercial truck traffic. I just asked, is it that we, if we try to be aware that that needs to be done whenever we have the, the control over that property to do so? Thanks.
So, those aren't really related issues, because the city technically owned all three properties when the access was designed and built, because it was built for transportation purposes. But it was designed with the idea that, that a, a building could go in in the front part and parking in the back. So design construction of that access isn't related. I mean, the, the property line with the neighboring property isn't going to change, the Jacob's property beyond. So so they're, they're kind of two separate issues.
Good to know though, so thank you. Any further comments? Okay, there's been a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. And opposed. Okay. All right, well, we are moving on. I just want to recognize that it is approaching nine o'clock and we have two important items yet to go. So hoping that we can well, the conversation will, will do what it needs to do. But I'm guessing we may not be done by ten tonight. Donna, go ahead.
We actually have three, remember the COVID update that we bypassed?
That's right, that's right. Well, that's still at the end, so we got, we've got three. All right, ten o'clock may not be realistic, but I just wanted to remind us of that. So towards the the item of the Gerton Pocket Park. So I would love to start this conversation by inviting, if there's any members of the public who would like to comment on it. And we'll start there and, and then we'll, we'll have a discussion about what to do. So any members of the public who would like to comment?
This is, this is Zach Hughes, how do you hear me?
We can hear you, Zach. Zach, would you like to go first?
Yes, I would. I'm just going to try to be in that two minute area for you, Madam Mayor. And ten o'clock doesn't sound realistic, but that was happy thinking, I think. Yeah, so good evening. I just want to be very brief. It's been kind of an emotional day for me today on different fronts. But I do want to say that this issue is about more than, for some of us, is about more than the park. And I do recognize everyone's arguments on it. And no, I, I do want to start by something my dad said. And I, and I have to say, I do like the new signs downtown. But he did mention to me, to be fair with Thanksgiving, as we're driving through, he said, this, wouldn't it be nice if we could do something for the less fortunate, so seeing these signs? So I kind of just nodded that off. And I do like the signs, but it was something interesting. Yesterday, I took a little field trip on the bike path. I normally take my oil drive as a shortcut over to the state street side. And, you know, on my way over there, I noticed, and I'm sure it's because winter's coming and all that, I noticed the picnic tables were, were gone or stored. And then I got over to Gershwine and the gentleman I was supposed to meet to do a banking transaction that I do every week with him for my services. He, he met me over there and he wanted to go do his banking transaction. But I said I wanted to look around the park for a minute. And, and then I talked to him, because he, he was hanging out at that park. And he's on the verge of homelessness and he likes to hang out over there. So he, I asked him about it, he said, well, he was bothered by the fact that the place was always trashed. And he tried to talk to the other people. He always tries to tell them they need to keep it clean, because he's afraid that, that you guys will relocate it. And, and so I, because I asked him about his impressions of the park. And he just, his take of it was, it'd be nice if it could be cleaner, if there could be larger garbage cans over there perhaps. But that, that should not be taken away from, you know, that situation. So I thought that was useful. And to me, it's just a very, I don't even know why it's emotional for me, I mean, it's a park. I, but I do think that I just want to point out that it's more than just the park. It's really about, are we continuing to do enough? And we are doing the best we can, I get that. But I just want to keep that in mind, I'll keep my statement at that point. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Zach. Great, others? Paige, yes, go ahead. Paige, you are muted.
No, I'm not.
Well, now, we can hear you now.
Okay, you must have unmuted me. Sorry. Okay, I'm, I'm not sure where to start. I've, I've talked with a, a number of you, we met in the pouring rain the other night at the park and talked about it. I was not a fan of moving it. More because I feel that the people who are using it need to use it than and also I, I feel that it truly beautified a pretty ugly spot along the bike path. But I do think, I, I do see that it's not necessarily serving the purpose that it was supposed to serve. I so I could, I could see moving it if it were moved to a good location. Probably not right away, because I think that something needs to take its place as a shelter for the people who need shelter before it goes anywhere. I think that's really important. We can't be heartless about this. The flip side of that is that I've been out there a couple of times when the odor was just so bad, you couldn't really go near it. And that was really disturbing. And it's, it, it is a mess. It's in a very difficult place to keep clean. And I, Alex, guys have been out there a couple of times a week, but you need water, it needs to be hosed down a lot. And it's a hard place to keep clean. So that's my two cents. I think we need to provide something for people before we move it.
Thank you. Also, I, I see, Ken, you've turned your video on. And Morgan, would either of you like to, to speak?
I'd like Ken go first.
Yeah, um, yeah, I mean, it's, it, it certainly clearly serves an unmet need for the homeless population. And we certainly need structures like this. We've, we've explored doing something similar behind another way. And are open, if you ever wanted to move the parklet there, that could work. I understand there may be some complications being because it's a private business over there. But it was certainly, my dream would be to, I had Ward Joyce out there, the architect of the park, come out and look, can you build another one here? And Steve Ribolin is open to having something on his land there, which is where our garden is. We've talked about it at the countywide level, it'd be great to have, I mean, this sort of We've talked about it at the countywide level, it'd be great to have, I mean, this sort of fits in the continuum of care. There's a certain segment of the population, the homeless population, who just doesn't cut it in the motels, doesn't cut it in, in the shelters. Um, folks, you know, there have to be rules in these places. And there's folks who just don't like to be indoors. So there is a need for sort of a durable shelter. And so, it's good, from my perspective, that the community's focused on this population and their needs. Um, it's tough with winter coming on, you know, this, the ground is freezing up. But certainly, I, I, it does seem like, and, and one more thing is, is people need a place to go gather, it's a public gathering place, whether, and these are members of the public. Um, it's sort of, sort of suggests there needs to be, there are more and more of these tight places. There's a, there's a demand for it. Um, it's, the, the mess and the odor and the, it's, it's difficult. And I've been out with crews trying to, Christmas Day last year, cleaning the park and just like cleaning the teenager's room, you know, and tried to help encourage folks to keep things clean. Um, but I understand why this is a difficult issue. I understand why it's difficult to come around that corner off the bike bridge. And, and that, that feels very cornering and intimidating. So, um, anyway, those are, those are some of my thoughts.
Thank you. Um, Peter, I see you're, you're here, I, I'm just guessing, but did you want to weigh in, Peter? Oh, that's okay. Oh, you're muted, though. Okay.
Did, did you mean Peter Kalman?
I did mean you, yes.
Okay, sorry. Uh, yeah, I, I, the only thing I, I would like to add is that I just hope we will be very careful, very clear that our objections are not to the people who use it, no matter how much it might smell or be unruly. That this is not an anti-homeless, um, sentiment being, um, heard. I have heard anti-homeless sentiment by people discussing this, uh, park. And I just hope, and I trust that the city council will not, um, be swayed by that kind of attitude. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Um, just, uh, guessing here, but Stephen, what, did you want to weigh in at all?
And also Morgan's back.
Oh, and Morgan? Thank you. I wish I had lost work. Morgan, did you want to weigh in at all?
Uh, yes, I did.
Okay, please go ahead.
Uh, sorry, I, um, something happened and I had to call back in. But.
No worries, now is a, now's a good time.
Okay, so Morgan Brown, uh, District Three. Um, all right, so, some people have kind of already covered some of the ground I was going to cover. So anyway, I hadn't, uh, known where Gerton Park was, and I had to find it, and then I was able to come across it. And then, uh, oh, within the last week or so, uh, Dan can correct me if I'm wrong, but he reached out with me, uh, to me and, uh, he had some discussion points and he wanted to talk. And so, we turned it into a, a walk-in discussion and we made it over to Gerton Park and stuff. Uh, we spoke for almost four and a half hours, you know? Uh, discussed a lot of different things, but the conversation kept going back to Gerton Park. And, you know, that's, I understand, uh, Dan's and Chase and other people's, uh, concerns, I do. Um, what I kept stressing was, um, you know, what people are concerned about are symptoms, you know? And we need to address what the real, um, root, unmet needs and circumstances are. And if we just, you know, go moving the parklet, doesn't, other people pointed out, including today at the task force meeting, you know, that some people could, you know, still camp out there, you know, you're not gonna, you're just moving the problem and maybe not, because some people could, you know, there's a spot there. They, they could put their tents up there, there's nothing stopping them. Or, or, you know, uh, you know, poncho or whatever. And what, what myself and many others, uh, you know, have tried to suggest is, let's try to address the real unmet need that's there, that this is a symptom of. You know, and maybe, you know, that will be beneficial certainly for those people and, and the community at large, you know? Uh, um, if it wasn't for what people did with me, working with me and stuff, I'd still be out there. You know, I was out there for 12 years, you know, and I tell you, it's real hard. Uh, nobody gets to where they are, whether for better or worse on their own. And certainly, uh, if people are in, you know, stuck in, in dire straits, you know, it's hard to move on, like, on your own, and we all need, you know, other people, uh, sometimes to be involved as long as we're comfortable with that. And that's why the, the, oh, oh, you know, having a pay worker could be very, very beneficial, because that person, you know, is going out and has relationships with people. And I tell you, that's a key ingredient to helping a person get housed and maintain housing is the, those type of relationships. I know, because that's why I'm housed right now. I've been housed for, you know, about 11 years. Uh, before that, it was 12 years out there, the last go-around. And if we want to make a difference, we gotta, and we can, we can do it, okay? It is possible to do, but we have to find a well and make it a high priority and realize that Montpelier does have a role to play. We have a role to play, and we need to do better and more. And we can, we can make the difference. So, I'd rather us be talking about that kind of stuff rather than a parklet structure, okay? The, the parklet structure is a symptom, you know? It's a symptom, you know, and the thing is, as Ken said, the people we're talking about, and then there's the public too. You know? And anyway, I think I've said my piece, but if you've got questions, feel free to field them, thank you, bye.
Thank you, Morgan. Um, Paige, something to add?
Uh, Steve Whitaker, I, I mentioned, uh, at a last event, can you hear me?
Go ahead, Stephen.
Uh, I mentioned at the last meeting that, that this is a multifaceted, very complex problem. And the, if we do it right, we will, uh, accomplish a lot of, uh, necessary, uh, introspection and, uh, will be changing the rudder of how we deal with the less fortunate in our community. So this is a, uh, an issue, I think it, I'm pretty sure it was Justice Brandeis that, uh, popularized the concept of proportional impact and assessment of the proportional impact. You know, it's, it's easy to say it's an inconvenience, it's a tight corner, the bicyclist or somebody didn't want to smell the body odor, you know, or we can't, conversely, we can't get our public works department to go out there and power wash the thing every two weeks. You know, but the impact on the folks that utilize that, uh, is much greater and needs to be respected here. That, that we should leave the status quo in place while we make sure a real plan is done. Be it done by the homelessness task force or you pay a contractor. I, uh, I know that a plan would include a number of such structures where people who can hang out, have a little privacy, maintenance is maybe, uh, you, we, you need to arrange for access to the transit center bathrooms for people who use that, so that they won't have to, uh, soil the place or climb over the bridge and, you know, uh, crap on the riverbank. Um, my point is that to make this decision absent a framework of alternatives uh, that, uh, offer, you know, compassionate respect to those folks that, um, aren't heard as well in the community and who aren't, uh, valued as well in the community, uh, needs to be guiding this decision. Uh, this, this should not be something that we're doing a knee-jerk, especially when you recognize that the charge you gave the task force has not been completed. And you might want to add to that charge, uh, and, you know, revise the composition of that task force in order to get the job done. But it needs to address restrooms and lockers and, and day hangout spaces and, and bathroom facilities and, and dignified camping. I mean, you're, you're gonna have people who are gonna use these facilities. And there should even be showers, we want to be welcoming, you know, uh, long trail people to come into town. Not everybody can afford hotel rooms. So, I'm just asking if we do this right and we do it with a long-range vision, that this is part of our, um, awakening as a community to, uh, the, the small things we can do to reintegrate, incorporate, respect and dignify those in our community who are less fortunate. Thank you.
Thank you, and Paige, go ahead.
Sorry, I wasn't unmuted before. Um, I want to thank Morgan for reminding me that when we had that conversation, um, at the park the other night, Connor suggested that we get the peer advocate, um, that works for the task force and ask that person to talk to the people out there and see what it is they do need. And I thought that was an excellent suggestion and hope that's gonna get followed up on. Um, because I agree, I, we need to provide something. And, um, and I think that this little shelter should stay where it is until something is, something else is provided.
Um, okay. So, thank you. Um, is anyone, anyone else from the public who would like to comment on this?
Can I, can I just, uh, respond to Paige's comment, which I appreciate? Um, so, Don Little, who right now works for Good Samaritan, um, and did apply, is, what, you know, is the peer worker, um, does talk to those folks and does ask what they need and provides a lot of what they need, like the short term. Um, you know, but those dialogue, that, that dialogue happens quite a bit. Um, folks want housing that's suitable. Um, folks have a lot of, you know, immediate needs. Um, and, and there are some folks that are just out there partying, so, you know? But that's maybe a surface behavior and they're, they're, they have deeper needs. And, and, but just, just, I wanted to reassure you that those one-on-one contacts with folks ha- happen quite a bit, so, but it's, it's a good thought.
So, um, I just want to, uh, start here by saying that I, I, you know, appreciate all of the thoughts that you all have shared. And it does, it feels like there is a, a need to go, uh, to go deeper on the issue of homelessness, to, um, sort of bring that back to the front, and maybe, maybe this means, um, re, just touching base with the homelessness task force. Um, you know, it's been a little while since, uh, since we, yeah, I, I mean, I know we got a report from you all on, on, well, it's sort of a report, I suppose, or an update anyway, on this particular topic. But, uh, it, it could be great to hear, um, either what you all are up to or what you need or what, um, sort of what is on the edge, um, of your work. Um, and I, so I, I'm also, so I'm hearing, I just want to reflect that I am hearing a lot of, um, a need to address the deeper issues. Um, also hearing that, um, I think Morgan sort of said, said this somewhat, but that, uh, you know, it's, it does feel like, you know, that, in a sense, that's more worth talking about than just the structure. Um, but that these two things don't have to, um, like, if we can, if we can go deep on the issue of homelessness, um, and we can provide, uh, for needs or whatever functions that structure is providing, um, that, that might create a window for, um, relocating it for other reasons that, that have also been identified as why it's problematic there. Um, so, in any case, I just wanted to, to open with that thought and, um, see what, who, what else has thoughts or comments? Um, Jack, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, this is an issue that I've been struggling with, probably more than a lot of the things we address here on the council. And it's really helped me to crystallize my thinking about homelessness in general and the city's role in addressing it, and I'm not going to get into that too much tonight. I feel I need to start by saying that I don't think that anybody on the council is motivated by any invidious responses to the people, uh, who use this place or who, or any, anything other than a sincere desire to serve the best interests of, of the city of Montpelier. I, I truly believe that with regard to all of us on the council. As I've been thinking about, what do we do? One of the things that has been in my mind has been, uh, the, uh, one of the things, it's a watchword of the disability rights movement, which is nothing about us without us. And I'm not a person in the, I'm not a disabled, disabled person, but I certainly work with people who were diagnosed as having disabilities every day. And, uh, I realized I hadn't been out there to talk to the people at the park. And so I did go out there and, uh, and talked to some folks there yesterday. And, uh, although they, there are people who didn't initially want to talk to me, um, I'm, I'm kind of used to that anyway. And, um, so I had, but I thought it was a good conversation. Yeah, I agree with Zach that, uh, this is more about more than the park. Um, is about what we're saying to, to the people, what the city of Vermont is saying to the people and who we value and how we value them. Um, the, this park, and this parklet and the other parklets in the city all are, uh, characterized in, uh, urban planning, uh, urban studies literature as a third place. You know, you have your home, you have your work, and you have a third place where you go out and you congregate with other people. And and it provides a real value to have that kind of place. Um, when I was growing up, one of my brothers had a friend who lived all the way on the other side of town. It was only 12,000-person town, but they figured out what was the midpoint. And so they would go and get together and hang out on this guy's front yard, uh, halfway between our house and their house. And, and they, that's just where they would hang out and talk. And when one of my sons and a bunch of his friends were in high school, they had one summer where they would, uh, go over and, uh, you know, that, uh, railroad car behind the, uh, the feed store. Every day, they would go over and climb up and hang out on top of the railroad car and, and just hang out and, and talk to each other. And they had friends, like, I had, my son had a cousin from out of town who came to visit and he thought it was the coolest thing. my son had a cousin from out of town who came to visit and he thought it was the coolest thing if they could just do that. And nobody, uh, nobody raised the slightest objection to them doing that. So I talked to the folks at, uh, Gerton Park and, uh, they said, well, what's going on here? And maybe more importantly, where would you be if this wasn't here? If this structure wasn't here? And they said, well, they need it because they need someplace to be out of the elements. And if the structure removed, I was talking to Paige, uh, by email the other day. And it's not clear to me whether we consider Gerton Park to be that structure alone or that structure in that location. What is it that defines that as Gerton Park? Um, but what they said told me was that, uh, if that structure removed, they would probably still be there because they need to have someplace to be. And so does that mean we would just have people sitting, hanging out on the ground, bringing folding chairs or whatever? Possibly, possibly would. And, you know, if, if the city wanted to make things hard for people, we could decide, okay, we're, even after we move the structure, we're not going to plow that section of it so that, uh, they just have to be, have to be sitting in the snow. I don't think we want to be, be like that. I don't think we want to be the city that does that kind of thing. What they did say was that, uh, one of the guys I talked to said, was that he was really unhappy about how messy the place gets. And now they have a garbage can and a recycling can there and that that has helped. And they thought it would really be helpful if there were also one of those, uh, ashtrays, one of those, uh, but whatever they call them, that, uh, that the smoking group puts around the city. And, uh, that would provide an opportunity to not throw their cigarette butts on the ground. I observed that it would be good if, uh, you know, there's, there's AC right there. I think it would be good if, uh, there could be an AC outlet that, uh, they could use for, for charging their phones while they're there. And I assume that that, uh, AC is because it's a, because it's a, like a street light or equivalent to a street light. So it's probably paid for, but on the, uh, Green Mountain Power, uh, street light rate, but, uh, I don't think it would be that difficult to also create, uh, the charging opportunity for the folks there. And, uh, and then the other thing I thought of just this afternoon is, maybe we could provide an opportunity for the people who spend time there, some of the people who spend time there to, have some responsibility for keeping the place clean. I, I know that Washington County Mental Health has, uh, has some occupational, has an occupational program as part of the services they do. Maybe we could bring Washington County Mental Health into the conversation. And I know not everybody likes to be involved with the, with the establishment mental health agencies. But that might be an opportunity to, uh, give the, the users of that park some, uh, stake in, in the maintenance of the place that would be, uh, that would improve the park and make it better for, uh, for the whole city. And so those are, that's a lot of thoughts that all come down to me thinking that, uh, I, uh, do not think that we should, uh, we should be moving it at this point and I would not be supportive of, uh, of moving it. And I think that there are, are things that we can do to improve the situation.
Okay, thank you. Other thoughts? Donna, go ahead.
I agree. I've all along not thought the movement was the solution to whatever you wanted to find the problem here of shared spaces. But I do think deeping diver into the whole issue of what anyone who's homeless faces. And I think of all the comments Stephen has made about running water. And I got a conversation with Stephen Rubelini, who kept, uh, Kevin Russ, Ken Russell, put me on too, because he was talking with another way about putting a shelter behind them, uh, like a 10 by 10 or Joyce was going to work on. But Steve mentioned mobile classrooms that come with bathrooms. You could put a shower in there. You could like maybe put it behind the rec building. So you could connect electricity, maybe plug in running water that we really look a little more broadly and try to bring in a lot of regional organizations. I left a message with Capstone, but didn't get to talk to Susan. But I think that we need to look at that really, really broadly. And even Stephen Rubelini mentioned Berry Street Rec as maybe that's a place we could use while it's under limited use by recreation people and see if there's a way to take advantage of the showers there with some regulated opportunities to get clean. I, I just think we have some resources we're not using right now. And just between now and March would make a huge impact while we look at something that's more substantial by the other players that have deeper pockets in us and have the staff and the expertise. But I think it's good if we could be a catalyst, maybe kick that kind of thinking off. So that's where I would like to put our time is looking forward to what we can create instead of still mauling over the structure that I actually like where it's at. I like it slows down the bicycles at the corner. As a pedestrian, I don't have so many surprises. I just, yeah, I really think we should deal on the big issue, the big picture, what we need to do to help those that are homeless.
So I just want to reiterate, I think we can, we can do that, um, you know, uh, take a hard look at what needs to be done. But also acknowledge that there are issues with, with it where it is. Um, but in any case, uh, other thoughts? Uh, Connor, go ahead.
Uh, I think it's a good conversation, um, because it does, uh, generate discussion about the deeper issues. Uh, it's a chat that we might not be having now if not for this park. It's, uh, at the same time, kind of a bad discussion because it becomes like a symbol, right? And it's dictated like whatever you decide might dictate what direction the city's going. And it becomes like a microcosm of the bigger issues there. Um, and I, I'll agree with Jack. I don't think anybody's coming in here. This is a council that voted against a smoking ban downtown. We didn't entertain any ordinances to ban like loitering in town or something. Um, you know, I'm not approving like a park like this. So people can like sip lattes like, um, I, I think anybody wants to hang out. When we talk about the sense of community, um, it's some of the folks who are there now, uh, but it's to have it accessible to as many people as possible. So, yeah, we had a good discussion, I think, the rain for like about an hour the other day. Um, and, uh, o- over the course of that, I was convinced that maybe it wasn't the best place, right? I was convinced that it might not be the best place because it's congested. Um, you know, it's like riddled with urine. It's trashed a lot of the time. And like Ward Joyce was saying, a lot of people in town just don't know it exists where it is frankly. You know, if you look at and, you know, I'll bring it up, it's, it is a memorial. When you make something a memorial, um, I think you do have an obligation, um, to listen to like Paige there. Who's saying, you know, it would be nice if it was on the water. It would be nice if it was central enough in town. Like don't exile it out somewhere else. So I, I, I think there are some alternatives that it could still be on the bike path maybe. Um, who knows about 12 Main Street facing the water or something? It could still be accessible to people. That might just be a different location. But when we build something because it like fits a need, you know, I, I think if I was envisioning this fitting the need for this particular group of folks who's, um, staying there, I, I would envision something that like has four walls, that has like water, that has this kind of stuff and not just something that covers them from being like stuck in the rain. So, um, I, I think that's like, it's awesome to hear like Dons on the ground, like talking to people. I think that's exactly what we mean. Like when we like funded a, a social worker position and a homeless liaison position. I think the next like few months can be an opportunity to treat this sort of as a test case to say, um, and I, I've been down there like Jack, I've spoken to people. It's not too many people. Um, can we really just do a full court press with this group of people and see what needs they have? And bring that up to the council, just as sort of a case study to see what we need to be doing for them, which radiates out to other people in the community to help them. Um, but I, I don't think this needs to be a purist discussion. I think it has the ability to turn into that. Um, I, I think we need to do what's right for the structure, what's right for everybody else. Um, I think we can make a determination that this might not be the best place, uh, but continue the discussion going forward here. So, um, I'd be okay moving the thing. Um, but yeah, I, I, I agree. We need to get to the heart of the deeper issues here.
Other thoughts? Dan?
So, um, I've also spent that hour in the rain, uh, with, with everyone. And I spent, uh, a substantial amount of time last week with Morgan talking through some of these issues in, in part because, um, when I initially approached this issue, and I should say, I, I didn't approach it, it more or less approached me. I had constituents, um, contacting me with complaints. And, you know, one of our jobs as city councilors is to articulate. When a constituent says, I'm bothered by this and these are the issues, you, you have a job as a city councillor to bring those issues forward. Um, and I left our last iteration of this discussion, which was really more of a meta discussion about whether we were going to have a discussion, w- wondering why this was such a difficult issue. And, uh, listening and hearing people's emotionally charged responses to these issues. Um, and I think it's been articulated tonight, so I won't say too much more, but we, we've, we've layered on to this or intertwined with this, these bigger issues of homelessness. And so let me say, I, I support, you know, what the mayor is proposing and what I think Ken is willing to do, which is let's, let's have a discussion with the homelessness task force about some of these issues and about their charge and about, um, you know, the work that they're doing and the work that can be done. Um, and the needs and understanding the needs. And that's, that's really, you know, when I say I had a conversation with Morgan, um, it, I did less of the talking and I'm glad about that, um, to hear some of the issues. Um, but I think it is important that we have this conversation. You know, there's a report out this week from the National Low Income Housing Coalition that says in the coming six months nationally, there's going to be about 6.7 million evictions because they've all been stored up and saved and there's been a moratorium that's going to be lifted. And when that 6.7 evictions start to move, we're talking about 19 million people nationwide that could be losing their homes, um, or their stable housing. Um, and how many of those are going to be in Vermont? How many of those are going to be in Montpelier? I don't know. What are their needs going to be? How is that going to affect that? We don't know. But I think we have an opportunity here to talk about those deeper issues and to address those. And, um, I think using the, the parklet may have been a catalyst for this conversation. Um, but I, I think keeping the two topics together has a potential for a toxic result. Um, and that really what we need to do is focus on these homelessness issues, um, as they are, as everybody wants to. Um, as, you know, a- address them full on. Don't use proxies of a parklet or, um, other things. Let's see what we can understand and what our role can be as a, as a municipality fitting within a larger series of municipalities in a region. So I, I fully agree and support with that. Um, and I think, you know, what, what I'm taking away from what I'm hearing from people is that moving the parklet right now is, is fraught with, um, issues. Not the least of which is that we really haven't identified its, its role within this series of problems. We know that there's a use that's being made of it, but we don't know how many people are using it. We don't know what the alternatives are, um, or what the alternatives could be. Uh, so, you know, I agree, given that we have these, uh, you know, we have these needs in our community, um, we can certainly listen to them. Um, but at the same time, I, I never saw this issue initially as a homelessness issue. This was an issue that the parklet, for a number of reasons, just isn't a good fit in its present location. That if we address the homelessness issues, it, it doesn't address the fact that it, I don't think it serves. When we talked with Ward, you know, he agreed, it really wasn't serving the initial purpose that it was intended for, which was, you know, a shelter, um, a momentary shelter on the bike path. Um, it was really intended to be a way station. Um, and it's not really serving that because in some ways it's too close to the city for people using the bike path and too far from the takeout places to be sort of that community gathering spot that, for example, the parklet outside of, uh, Charlie O's used to serve or the parklet outside of, uh, the Episcopal Church serves. And so, you know, again, you know, with the concerns about distancing in a, in a COVID era, I think that this parklet, you know, is not, um, the right spot there because people who feel uncomfortable or feel crowded don't have the opportunity to move apart. And I'm not talking about feeling intimidated by people living, uh, not living, sorry, sitting there or i- it's just, it's a crowded and bottleneck. Um, and I think those, those concerns continue. Um, and, you know, there is been, there has been misuse of that and we've all discussed these issues, trash, alcohol, drugs, um, you know, uh, urination. We've had reports of nudity um, and other activities there. Um, and I don't know who's doing that, um, or what populations are doing that, but those are issues that obviously give people concern. Um, and, you know, it, those issues may go away, but they may not. And to the extent that they don't, I think it's still, you know, it adds to that list. Um, and I think when we, when we think about this, we have to think about, you know, uh, we have to de- separate out these issues. So let's, let's talk about homelessness. Let's talk about those needs, um, in our community and whether this is the best place for them or whether there are alternatives a- and not just this need, but other needs as well. Let's have that broader discussion. Um, you know, let's get, let's talk about the gaps in the social services that are being delivered now. Um, and then let's talk about the parklet itself a- as a separate topic. Um, but I think it's a predicate rather than, uh, a beginning. And I think we, we talk about the parklet and we talk about where the parklet goes or whether it stays, um, as a separate conversation. Um, but I think we, we talk about the, these issues first because they're, they're not tied to the parklet, but they're certainly symbolized by this discussion of the parklet. And the more we can decouple those, I think the more we can have the conversations that everyone in this situation really wants to have.
Thank you. Uh, Jay or Lauren? Uh, Lauren, go ahead and then Jay.
Lots of, lots of good discussion and good food for thought. Um, I mean, I think I, I'm pretty much in line with, uh, what I was hearing from Connor in terms of, you know, I, I do think that this, the structure is serving a function for, um, a variety of people, um, including, you know, people who are currently living unhoused. So if we're going to look to move it, I would want to, um, you know, consider a location that allows people to continue using it. So I, I do think there's kind of, it's, it's not an entirely black and white issue that just because you move it, you've taken that function away. And so I think we could, you know, disentangle that a little bit. Um, you know, I want to be really sensitive to Paige's, uh, desires around this, um, as well. As well. And, you know, keeping it on the water, I know she expressed a preference tonight for leaving it where it is. Which, you know, I I am, I would be fine with leaving where it is now unless we. Found a place that, you know, in my mind, what I'm hearing tonight and I've heard the last few meetings is, you know, somewhere. On the water to fulfill the memorial memorial function for Jed, which is really important and that would continue to. Allow it to kind of function the way it is right now, but maybe there's a space that's less congested. And so, I think that could be a potential solution that I would be comfortable with. I also, you know, welcome and I'm eager to have broader conversations about. What the city is doing around homelessness, I'm concerned about what could happen with. Federal dollars running out and, you know, what what's gonna be happening to people? If they're are not the same kind of supports that the state was putting in place. You know, come January or whenever that might happen, so I think we need to really be watching it closely and when we look at our. Our city budget and, you know, think about what we're funding or not, that we're being really thoughtful of, you know. What what the impacts of cutting or maintaining budgeting for for different. Different programs and different supports for the city, so. I guess that's where my head is.
Thank you, Jay, go ahead.
Well, I certainly appreciate everybody's thoughts on this, I know everybody's. Has given it a lot of time and consideration and I'm appreciative of that. I I'm not gonna echo what everybody has said, but I I guess what I sort of posed to the group is. What are our tangible next steps if we are? How do we apply some accountability to this process, how do we, you know, consider? You know. E- even beyond relocating the 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 pocket park, how are we going to, you know? Who's gonna take some proactive steps to manage, to make sure that the populations that that's using it in this way? If we are looking at it as really as two separate separate questions, as a as an issue of homelessness as well as really a a. Just a logistical and feasible location for the pocket park, if we're going to. Try to work with the population that's there, who? Who do we look to to make some decisions and be proactive on? On supporting that population and so I, you know, I look to 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 Ken or or. Really anybody, is it is it the homelessness task force? Or or is it city staff, like where where where? Where where do we, where do we take some next steps to try to, it it sounds like we're we're not gonna, you know. Go tomorrow morning, the city staff isn't gonna go pick it up and move it somewhere, so beyond that, because there are some more. Obviously more significant macro issues at play here. How can we look to start resolving them? So, because I think there's been a lot of really good thought and conversation around the issues at play. But I I I just would love to, you know, hear ideas on what next steps might be.
Dan, go ahead.
Sure, I was just gonna offer maybe some suggestions, because I have thought about that and I think Jay's question's a really good one. And I would suggest maybe two tracks. One track would be asking Ken when he'd be available to. Come to the city council with the homelessness task force or or, you know, their representatives to to start this process. Understanding that probably January is budget time and working with our. Our schedules sort of as the docket fills up, as it were. But looking to sort of start that process of. Let's let's get reports from the homelessness task force and let's start that conversation and maybe the second. And I'm always reluctant to do this, but you know, maybe this is a. The live, if we talk about the pocket park itself. Apart from these issues, ma- maybe it's a subcommittee. That says what are the alternative sites? What are the, what are the options? And I could see that having some of us and maybe, you know, someone like Paige o- on there, given her. Stakeholder role in in this. As a way of, because it it one of the things that that. You know, in talking with and looking at some of the sites that are available, just looking at the memo of the city presented, a number of them have. Flood hazard issues or, you know, further technical complications, so e- even if. We as a city council all of a sudden said, well, you know, we can put, we can put this issue aside, but let's move the pocket park. A number of the locations that we've talked about come with technical issues that we couldn't answer tonight. And so it may make sense to have a smaller group, take a look at the options, including the option of keeping it there. And maybe making modifications, you know, pushing the the wooden bench that's really close to the bridge further back. Or, you know. Saying, you know, addressing some of the concerns that I I I've heard as well. About that I articulated about where it's located and what does it serve the bike path function that it's intended to serve. But have those two tracks sort of move independently with an idea that, you know, come March. We would have both of those conversations going in a robust manner.
Um, I, oh, yeah, Paige, go ahead.
Um, just briefly, I would be happy to serve on a subcommittee like that if if that would be helpful. And secondly, though, just in response to Lauren's comment, if if I were going to provide a shelter for. People who need shelter, it would not be one. Like that building, it would be one with benches that people could lie down on, I. I don't think that is the ideal shelter for people. So. But yeah, I I would be happy to serve on either of those, either.
Thank you, Paige. Did I see a hint from Lauren and then Ken, yeah, go ahead, Lauren.
I was just gonna briefly, I I'm not at all suggesting like if we were going to from scratch build a shelter to. To serve certain purposes, I'm saying I I think it's being used right now and unless we're offering an alternative. I don't wanna take that use away from people, but I think, you know, looking more long term, if we wanna build. Structures or or rethink opportunities, then I think that should be part of the conversation. But I I did not mean to imply that that this is, you know, was structured in a certain way or is an ideal structure for for meeting. Meeting needs of people.
Uh, Ken?
Yeah, I mean, part of what, yeah, yes, to, you know, are we willing to do any of the above? Absolutely, and I'm glad to be here as part of this discussion. I'm, there are, and part of the work here is. There are so many people in so many rooms talking about these issues, there's a, there's a lot of care and concern and brains going into. These issues. And at the end of the day, and the end of the day, you're also dealing with some human behaviors that. You know, there are folks that don't wanna be part of a a system or somebody else's plan or solution, it's it's not just about gaps in services. There there are other things going on, but there are gaps in services. The, and at the countywide level, there's this great Monday morning meeting with like Sue Minter and Mary Molton and Rick DeAngelis and. Will Everly and it's Eileen Peltier and they're very concerned about what's going on in Montpelier, so. You know, I would love to, I mean, the composition of the the task force and what we're doing, yeah, there's, we can always do better. And dynamism and knowing how to convene conversations with many, many people. Most effectively and get work done is, there's, it's. It's sometimes more of an art than a science and, you know, and it's really powerful to listen to each and every person here who's speaking. Very thoughtfully about this, about the complexities here. So. I hear the timeline of March that, I mean, I I want more things to happen more quickly, but things can happen in parallel. And I would just, I would love to talk to any anybody here offline or in different formats. Love to have, we we haven't had a council member. At our task force meeting in in quite some time, basically since Glenn left. Thomas, I'm on, I'm on a meeting, you need to go, sorry, forget. So. No. Forgive, so, sorry, but I'd be really, would love to convene more. Meetings quickly, Stephen, I appreciate your stalwartness on all of these issues. A lot of the issues about bathrooms and laundry and, you know, all the things that have been mentioned have been things we have covered. There, there's a lot of work to be done and I'm glad that a lot of energy is here.
You know, one of the reasons why I. Am open to this idea of a. Smaller group talking about it, you know, what should be done with this structure. Is because it's not likely to, I I think, I think probably it is. Late enough in the in the season that it wouldn't necessarily be moved until the spring anyway, so we do have a little time there, Connor.
Yeah, no, I was just gonna say I'd be happy to serve on a small subcommittee that would scout out possible locations. As a parallel track to some of the other discussions. And I I think Paige and I even discussed that early on, earlier on. Maybe just in a smaller group together, so I I'd be happy to do some work on that.
I would as well. Being someone who's invested a lot of time and energy in that space. How how do others feel about? Creating a smaller group or would anybody else be interested?
I think Ward would probably be interested.
Yeah, fair. Other, other thoughts from other councillors, Jack, Donna, Jay? Not that's okay.
I I think it's a good idea, it's not something that I could. Take on given what I'm already doing.
Okay.
I think just, i- if there's a small group that, you know, including Paige and and. And Ward that understand, you know, the spirit of what we're trying to do with the structure, obviously very separate from. The other, the other track we're talking about, that, you know. Just investigating other potential spots, understanding what limitations there are, whether they're in the, in a flood zone, et cetera, and structures, all that. Like doing that legwork would be great and then bringing it back to to the group to, you know, bring options that what's feasible and what's not, I think. Makes the most sense.
Fair enough. And Lauren, I know your camera's off, but I have faith that you are there, do you have any further thoughts?
No, I mean, I think it sounds like a good idea, also don't have capacity right now to take it on and appreciate the folks who have stepped up.
Okay, I don't feel like we need emotion about that. But it sounds like there is a a small group. Consisting of Connor, myself, Paige and. And I I know, Dan, you suggested it, but I didn't hear you wanting to.
No, I'm happy to be a part of it, I've opened my mouth, so I'll I'll put my money where it is, so I don't say too much more.
Okay. All right, fair enough then, so we'll we'll organize a little get together and hopefully we'll come back with the. Recommendation. Okay, I think, oh, Donna, yes.
Well, you mentioned a group for the park, but what about the homeless task?
Yeah, so I. Thank you, I had interpreted that as let's get Ken and the homelessness task force on the agenda. For an upcoming meeting, so in my mind, that wasn't necessarily a an additional group, but but a a just a different kind of next step. If that's okay with you.
Right, I unfortunately, I I wanted the emails we got, someone said that Connor and I were the liaison to the homeless task force. And I didn't sign up for that, I.
I haven't seen one meeting, Donna.
That's because I can't, I my work schedule and all cannot cut into mornings. But I'll be glad to reach out to some of these regional groups that. The capstone and others are involved in and see if we can bring them along as well as the homeless task force to talk to us. But I I I can't take on that particular committee representing the council, that's.
I I wanted to interject real quick that I I added that into the. The memo that I had sent out just because that was the assignments given in March, so I think you even said at the time that that was.
I don't remember that.
No one was assigned, people said that they were, it was a volunteer, I'll drop in when I can. Has not happened.
Yeah, may- maybe that's worth revisiting too. Dan, then, uh, Jack, yeah.
Sorry, I I just, I, I I think at least i- i- initially having the task force. Talk with us might be, I I don't wanna overload this first conversation, especially as we 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 start to. Get a handle on some of these issues and I don't want it to be too too big. But I really look to, you know, and 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 maybe coming out of that. That there is, there is sort of further, further action that we need to take, but I I think the first step is. To have the task force report to us since it is our task force. And and maybe it starts, the task force starts to look more like a a coalition that that helps coordinate. Between different groups or or provides a place where people can talk. Or maybe we use it more like the the way the the police review. Committee is is starting to form where it does deeper dives into some of this research and understanding and need assessment and. So that, you know, to help us define our role, I I don't know what that necessarily looks like, but I think that's where our convers- conversation with them. And with this topic begins.
Jack?
The the other part of it is. It Ken mentioned. These meetings he has ever, he's part of every Monday morning, and I don't know if that's the. Continuum of care, but I think, okay, no, but so this is, these are a group of people who are. More than just planners, there are people who are, whose organizations do concrete things and I would expect. Ken, having heard and participated in this whole conversation, including. The idea of a number of concrete things that. We are talking about is that I I would expect that part of. The conversation in one of these meetings coming up very soon will be, what can? All of the entities that are represented at this, these meetings do to move forward with some of this stuff. With implementing some of this stuff sooner than. March or or February or January.
Uh, Ken, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean. These are folks that are getting stuff done now, I'm not not to, not to be blunt or rude, but I mean, that's part of part of the, I mean, these, this is a. Came out of the Winock Rock Spring COVID emergency planning structure and these folks have been meeting every Monday since since then. And so. You know, Eileen's, I can't even keep track of all the housing she's put online through Downstreet and there's gonna be more this month. And. And there are folks in motels, the bulk of people are in motels, there's dealing with security, you know, so. Forgive me, I I've just sounded really grouchy, but but certainly connecting with them. Responding to what Dan was saying and where the conversation starts makes good sense. We owe you a report, it's been a year, you know, I I I I think we should do a written report to. For efficiency, responding to the charge and an analysis of where we think we are. And. Certainly will bring this conversation to that group on Monday. And can and can report back. So forgive me for cutting through stuff and, but but I do, I do wanna point out, there there is this dynamic in this work where. There are the folks that are actually have the capacity and the organizations that are working on these issues can get stuff done. That's what that meeting is and then. You can get stuff done. That's what that meeting is. And then there are a lot of people wanting to solve all the world's problems and that's good and all that adds up. But oftentimes it's like, what's actually getting done is, you know, it, there, there are a lot of people wanting to solve homelessness. And then there's the whole rubber meeting the road thing and who's actually making that happen. And so that's, and, and I say that with not taking, not taking, not assuming that anybody here is, is pie in the sky. I, I, I hear a real seriousness, a desire to, to really in a concrete way solve these problems.
Uh, go ahead, Jack, and then I think it's probably time to move on.
Um, I got a suggestion while this is, discussion was going on, that it would be, might be useful to invite one of the people who, uh, spend time using that park to be part of the, uh, committee that, uh, various people volunteered to be on and we may or may not get someone to agree to do it. I, I tried to get people to log on to the meeting tonight to be heard and nobody was particularly interested in doing that, but, um, that doesn't mean we don't keep, uh, trying.
I'll make the invite. I, I can pop over this week.
Great.
Might just, it might be good just to show up with a video camera and say, are you willing to talk? You know, what, ask him some questions. Just right in the moment. Forgive me.
All right. Well, um, one of the things that I appreciate about this group is how thoughtful you are and how you take the important issues really seriously. So, thank you. Um, all right. So, uh, I think we're going to move on from that conversation right now. Um, unless there's any further, further last thoughts here.
I think the bell tolls for moving on.
I, indeed, indeed it does. All right. I know it's 10, but like, we're gonna, we're gonna make it happen, team. Um, all right. Thank you, everybody. And on to the budget. So I think I'm, am I passing that on to, who am I passing it on to? Kelly? Bill?
Okay. Um, so the good news with the budget is that we are way ahead of the schedule that we normally have, um, for doing these. The not so good news is we're not quite as far ahead as we thought we'd be tonight. So we do have a budget draft internally. We are making some final. I'll, I'll use Kelly's word, we're ticking and tying and, um, we are trying to, to finalize things. So what I'm going to do is give you the real 20,000 foot view of where we are. A lot of this will probably be familiar. I'm going to try to stay away from some specifics because we're still have a few more decisions to make. And actually this conversation tonight was helpful. In a lot of these issues, hearing, hearing where you're at on things. Um, and also in some cases, we have some communications to make with various folks to let them know where we are and have, that hasn't happened yet. So I don't want them getting information this way. So, uh, with that said, I'm going to attempt for the very first time ever to share my screen. Uh, I did do a practice run this afternoon with Cameron, but, um, and now it says host disables participant screen sharing.
I fixed it. I fixed it. I'm sorry. I was a little slow on the uptake. Um, it's, you should, right now.
Be able to do that. Okay. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Beautiful. Look at that. Okay. So this is actually going to be a, um, a pretty fast, uh, thing. So my goal today, let me, let me begin with the end in mind. I'm going to give you this quick overview. You will be getting the full budget books. Hopefully by Friday, certainly by Monday. Um, with all the detail and a lot of information in it, and then next Wednesday, uh, we would be having the full substantive discussion anyways. We're not really losing time. I just had hoped to be able to leave a little bit more particulars tonight. I'm just not comfortable doing that. I would, I just, you know, it sounds kind of silly, but before I sign my name on, you know, recommending a budget to you, I want to make sure it's exactly what I wanted to say. So we're, um, and I, I say that specifically because Kelly, the staff, everyone else has done their jobs. The numbers are all put together. It's me tinkering with the final product. So, um, there we go. So obviously this is a preliminary budget outline and I say preliminary because subject to change. Uh, as we approached our budget, thinking about the budget and obviously I think these are things that, themes that will uh, affect all of us this year as we continue talking. Obviously the big, big theme is we have a major budget gap due to COVID-19. That said, we still need to deliver responsible services. We spent a lot of time developing and implement, developing a strategic plan and we should be trying to do as much of that as we can with the resources that we have. One of the key things that we dealt with as a staff, and I think the council should spend time thinking about this is a decision about a budget horizon of one year or a multi-year. Uh, and I think we talked about this a little earlier and I think that the struggle we were having as a staff was the uncertainty about where we were at with COVID and were we looking at something, this could be a two or three year thing, in which case you can't put off certain capital expenses or equipment expenses for that long period of time. And we'd have to be looking at kind of a systemic, uh, reorganization of what we do. When it came time for us to do this work last week or two, you know, the news of the vaccine and, and these other things is out now. And so now it appears it might be a shorter horizon, particularly when you think about the fact that the budget we're talking about doesn't even start till next July 1 and goes to the following June 30 of 22. And when we're hearing news that maybe we'll all be vaccinated by June or July. So it's possible that even this budget we're talking about could be seeing a return to normalcy during its lifetime, but we just don't know that. But what we did feel comfortable was saying that is the, sort of the wingspan of this from kind of now till June 30, 22. And so we, we as staff, um, emphasized kind of a shorter term window and saying, okay, let's keep our services going and think what we can do to get us past the hump. Um, we have to recognize that our residents and businesses are hurt by COVID. So whatever decisions we make as far as spending their money is going to affect them and, and their taxes and those kinds of things. And it required us to restructure some fund transfers and most notably the, in, in that, this is a little bit of inside baseball. We'll explain this in more detail when time comes. But particularly with parking, um, you know, we, we think of our parking and we think, well, we, we pay the, the one full-time and the two part-time people, we lease some lots. You know, maybe we put some payment. What does it cost for parking, you know, parking meters? But actually we, a, a portion of our police, a portion of our dispatch, a portion of even some of our admin stuff that deal with parking have all been being paid out of the parking fund. So with the parking fund performing so badly, that puts a, a pressure on the general fund because we have to kind of reallocate those funds. And, you know, the other thing about this is, is, uh, it's given us an opportunity to look at some of our long-term allocations that we've just lived with and made us think about, well, is this really right? And is this crisis an opportunity to readjust? So, uh, so there was that. So just to remind you, the strategic plan, uh, council, your, your top priorities were in alphabetical order, you know, community prosperity, COVID-19 response, environmental stewardship, more housing, responsive and responsible government, and sustainable infrastructure. And you will have in your budget book, a summary, um, that Cameron did a really nice job of, of taking the, not only these priorities, but the, the work plan that went behind it and sort of highlighting what is in and what's not in the budget. So there'll be a detailed analysis of that. So here's, get right to brass tacks here. We, uh, our general fund is basically, we're looking at about $520,000 less in non-tax revenue, um, next year than, than what we had in, what we'd have assumed for the current year budget, even though we've already downgraded that. And then the parking fund is another 525,000. And as I just mentioned, that's the impact to the general fund. That's not, so it's, it, you know, you can't say, well, it's a parking fund, let's cut parking expenses because it hits all sorts of, so we had a revenue gap of, of a little over a million dollars to overcome. And in addition, um, you know, budgets don't stay static. There are some things that, that tick up. And so just at the very basic, we have our personnel costs. We got very fortunate, some of you that sat here last year dealing with it, I remember the health insurance deal. Well, whatever we paid last year came through because it's only about a 4% increase this year, uh, in our budget. And so that helped a lot. Uh, it would have really been devastating if we'd had another massive change. Um, legal, you know, we've been woefully underfunding legal forever and it just seems like the time, this was maybe the time to bite the bullet and get the right number in. And another, uh, I think tactical decision that we made, um, in part because of, is talking, we received 25,000, five, seven, 25,700 dollars a year from the state for re, to go towards reappraisals. Over the last several years, it's just been, that's gone as a, or to go towards assessing our grandness, it's, it's gone into the general fund to offset our, our operating budget, which is fine. It's a perfectly legitimate use for it. But as we thought, as we realized that now we need to do a reappraisal. And so we're, you know, we've got to come up with the money over the next couple of budgets. It occurs to us that, you know, in another 10 years, we're going to be in the same spot. And so perhaps now as it, as we're restructuring things, now is the time to start taking that 25,000 and setting it into a reappraisal reserve so that in 10 years we'll have 250,000, 257,000 dollars, uh, to help with the then council to pay for a reappraisal. So we decided that that, this was, you know, something we could do. So we took it out of general revenues and put it in reserve. So basically creating a pretty modest, um, but expense gap of just under 400,000. So making the loss of revenues and these built-in expenses about a 1.44 million dollar budget gap to, to create. So, um, we took a look at what we did. We started with our, our human resources. We have six vacant positions currently. Uh, actually we might have a few more, but some were filling. Uh, but we, we've chosen to leave six vacant and we are specifically calling them, leaving them vacant. We're not considering these cuts. We hope that when things lost or, but for the purposes of this budget, uh, there's one police officer, patrol officer position, uh, one finance position, two in recreation due to retirements. Uh, and we'll talk about that in more detail, but the plan there is that the parks department is going to assist with recreation in terms of field maintenance and this thing for this coming season. Won't be, that wouldn't be a forever plan, but we've worked that out for the, this year. Then DPW has a, a couple of vacancies as well. They actually have more, but they're getting filled. Uh, and some of these are, were, were left over from last year. So that, uh, that brought us 384,000 in savings, capital and equipment plan and, and our, some of our folks just spent some time talking about this, uh, is hit pretty hard, knocked down 538,000 out of that. We've looked at our external and community funding and this is one of the moving targets that we still have, but currently we've got in for about 412, over, for 12, 113,000 operating, uh, budgets, 68,000. And then we had two ballot items last year, 23.5 for CVPSA, 23.5 for Central for My Home Health and Hospice. And we assumed, you know, we don't normally budget for those. So, but they're in our base tax rate now. So we said, they're not in. So that, as you can see, uh, brings us to a total of 1.45 million, which is about the same as the 1.44 million gap we were trying to, trying to reconcile. So that's where you'll be looking, you know, the general areas. Um, and like I said, you'll be getting a lot of specific information about that. I guess some of the good things is we do, you know, right now, this is all being done with no tax increase. Which, uh, we staff thought was important, given the hit to retain funding for our modular lives since they were working specifically, uh, to help our downtown. The equity consultant that we, we get committed to, Romanian, MEAC had $5,000 that's still in, um, the even though we cut a police officer, we kept the social worker in there. Uh, the library ballot item is still in at the same amount. The personnel cost reallocations that I just talked to have now been done and are reallocated. And, uh, one of our, our top priorities was, um, maintaining the basic services that we have to the extent that we can do so in a, in a COVID environment and in this financial environment. So as we go forward, I think these are, you, you'll probably have a lot of questions, but is, as the policymakers, I think things that you want to be mulling over even now, between now and next week, but also over the course of the time is, is, did, did, did we get it right with the one-year horizon? Uh, or should we be thinking about something different? And if you conclude that it should be something different, um, we can try to work on. So we have, one of the nice things about being a little ahead of time is we, we have a little bit of time, not, not endless time, but a little bit of time to look at some alternatives. Are the funding priorities properly balanced? You know, did we get it right with how, where we chose to, to make our decisions? Should there be more in some areas and less in others? Uh, is, is the strategic plan adequately addressed? And we'll give you an, an analysis of that, but, uh, did we, did we do the job you were hoping we would do? And I think this is probably a big one. Uh, and we talked about it just slightly at the, at the capital meeting right before this, but if the money, if money starts to come back, maybe federal money comes in or by, by June of next year, things are looking better and people are parking and our, our, you know, pilot or our rooms, meals and alcohol taxes coming in, pilots coming in, you know, the, we, we start looking good financially, what would be some of our priorities for budget restoration? Would it be some of the things we, we cut off the list? Would it be other things? How would we prioritize restoring, including, um, you know, trying to maybe build our fund balance up to, to get closer to our, our policy. So there's all kinds of things to be given some thought to. I mean, it'd be one of these weird, this could be a kind of a weird budget year where we're spending as much, talking about as much about what, what we will do next as opposed to what we're going to do now. And then finally, what's the appropriate tax rate for this year? Is it, is it no increase or are you comfortable increasing or should it be decreased, uh, because of things? So I think those are, really those are always generally the budget questions, but I think they're really looming large this year under the circumstances. So, um, this says 12 fourths, that's Friday. So I guess I'm saying this in public now. But if it's Monday, I hope you'll forgive me. Um, you'll be getting the normal summary letter with all the detail. You'll be getting all the full budget info that you normally get, uh, including the last two or three year history. You'll be getting the summary charts, circles and arrows and paragraph on the back of each one, you know? You'll be getting your organizational charts, uh, for each department. Uh, as I mentioned, the analysis of the strategic plan and budget and, um, a list of projects, equipment and needs requested but not included. And again, I think the folks on the capital committee already saw some of that. Um, we'll be laying that out so you can get a sense of the demand that's building up from, from la, the current year we're in that we ended restrict and then this, this coming year. So, you know, if you're sitting in your seat right now, say, I don't have enough information to process any of this, you're right, you don't. Um, but it's coming and, and, and it's, it's being prepared and it's in, in structure. So, um, have no fear, you will have all of this and probably more, you know, we're using all, all the stuff you normally get, the list of employees and, you know, all those kinds of things. So, um, just to lay out our schedule, uh, like I said, the next thing that will happen is you'll, you'll actually get a formal signed budget from me with a recommendation and a proposal. And then next Wednesday, we will have a budget workshop. Um, and I'll probably do a quick summary of what the actual numbers, but then we can dive right into it. There's really nothing else on the agenda except housing initiatives, which shouldn't take too long. And then the rest of the evening is budget for as long as you want to go. And then on January 6th, that you recall, remember you did not, you have to opt in right now, not to schedule a meeting for December 16th or of course December 23rd. So your next meeting after that is January 6th. Uh, we certainly could find another date for budget workshop in between there if you felt it was necessary. On January 13th is the first public hearing of all, this is, as usual, but you can still also have discussions and changes. And then finally, on the Thursday, the second And then finally, on the Thursday, the second public hearing, which is also the deadline for petitions is is on that day, and that's when you have to make the final vote for what goes on the ballot. And then, as mentioned, I think again, also during the Capitol Plan Discussion, what we hope to do is follow up with the utility budgets in February. I just put the tenth, but it could be both the tenth and the twenty fourth. Water, sewer, district key, those are things that we don't vote on. The only thing voters vote on in town meetings is the tax appropriation. So it's, it's, you know, we're really on a big schedule to get the general fund done. Technically, we don't set water and sewer rates till June or July, so we often don't do those budgets till later. But our thought was to try to keep them right in sequence while we're in budget mode and just finish those up. And then, of course, on March second, voting early and often, our our machines will switch the votes to yes. And we'll be all set, and then early, early voting starts in mid February. So that's the basic summary. I'm happy to answer any big, broad questions or take comments or anything else, but I know there's not a lot of detail. And it will be very soon.
Okay. Thomas, some questions?
While you're pondering your questions, I do want to call out our team. We do this as a group. We, these numbers were developed by everyone together. I would say in a room, but it was a virtual room like this. But we spent a day and we did not, other than knowing the gap we wanted to close, we didn't have a preconceived number for like capital, and so the the numbers that came up with were developed by everybody, so the capital and so everyone's in. And then I also want to especially call out Kelly. This is her first budget with us, and it's a complicated one, a lot of moving pieces. She's done a great job of keeping track of everything and and we will be balancing it all up tomorrow and finishing all this up. And it's, it's, we have a, we have a complicated budget for a small little city, and it's tougher the first time through, and it's even more tough when you're in a pandemic, so.
Yes, thank you. We're so grateful. Lauren, you had a question?
Remember, did did we get clarity on how petitions are going to work this year? Just thinking of how that could interplay with budget, if people are going to be putting items on and we're going to get that the last minute, like how that could feed into.
So, so start with petitions every year. That could happen any given year. We could get a petition on the last day and have to put it on. So the difference, I think, sometimes is because they're physical and people are out, you know, we know about them. Someone's taking papers out, you know, maybe someone's asked you on the streets, and we have a sense of what's out there. And right now, there is no guidance from the Secretary of State saying that anything other than written petitions are allowable. I think it's probably going to be talked about. There's some, and you know, maybe they will allow electronic signatures this year. I don't know. Right now, there's nothing. Jack?
Well, what I've heard, I I checked with the Elections Division and what they told me, and I might have mentioned this at a previous meeting, or it might have been an email to John, that candidate petitions are not required this year. Other petitions are not, that requirement is not waived, so I don't think that they, since those requirements are either in charters or in statute, I don't think the Secretary of State is likely to have the authority to change that.
No, and I think, I think the question is whether, whether electronic signatures on a petition would, you can't get, you can't not have petitions. But do electronic signatures, are they sufficient to to satisfy the petition need? And there's no guidance on that yet. The City Council obviously always has the authority to place something on the ballot, by request of somebody else or by your own. You know, you can, we talked about this at one point, you can even separate things out from this budget and say, hey, you know, we'd like to see this, but we'll see if the voters want to, want to do that. That's your choice. I actually, it's interesting, I just had an interaction with, you know, e- email conversation with the the managers in Bennington and Brattleboro, who are asking the same questions, like, what are you doing on petitions? And I think every council is, you know, in this situation where we don't want to just say, hey, we'll put every, anybody who asks on the ballot. Because that seems a real good chance to just run up the tally for people who have never asked for anything, so you know, we might want to think about that. You as a council might want to think about, you know, maybe it's one of these things that if you've been on the ballot before, if you've petitioned successfully before and passed the voters before, then we would consider putting you on the ballot without having to do it again, but anybody new still needs to meet a petition requirement, so, but that would be your choice. Obviously, I think, you know, the notion of having to face to face petitions or going door to door does seem like it's not the best plan for this year. That's a really long-winded way of answering. I'm sorry, Lauren, didn't mean to take that long.
Helpful, thank you.
Dan, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I guess it was, I had a similar question to Lauren's. But I mean, at least in the past, Bill, isn't it, we we've not just the not just if they've petitioned before, but if they've received budget. I know when I was on the Assemblyary Commission, for example, there was one year where we wanted a a bunch of money for for drainage improvements, and City Council was not willing to necessarily go along with that. But they did say, we'll put it on as a separate petition item. And to which I thought, that's a kiss of death, and and it wasn't. We've asked it. Which was good, because it was an important thing, but I mean, it strikes me that there might be those type of categories of existing city departments, existing allocations, prior petitions and those type of items that, you know, would all fit into that sort of similar category of things that we may not want to include in the budget or put separately out to the voters in a year like this, but that we would feel comfortable doing as opposed to just opening floodgates to anyone who wants to petition.
The fact of the matter is, if 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 you said, we used to have a, before we created the Community Fund, you may recall, there were a lot of people on the ballot every year. And and the policy then was if you had petitioned and been on and passed and you were not asking for an increase, you could, the council would just put you on the next year. But it had to be the same amount of money that you already petitioned for and successfully passed. And then about eight years into it, the council said, well, maybe we'll make them all petition again. Just because, you know, and and some of them may need different amounts of money, and we did that again, and then it wasn't long after that that the Community Fund was created. So I just, you know, if you were just to use that old policy, you must have been on by petition. Has to pass the voters, and it's for the same amount. There's really only one eligible petitioner, and that's Central for My Home Health and Hospice. They they did that last year. So, because CVPSA can, if they choose, put themselves on the ballot without us approving it. But the so, so you could limit the automatic on to one group and anybody else would have to petition. I'm not saying that that's good or bad policy, that's just fact.
Fair enough. Other thoughts or comments? Connor?
Yeah, no, I'd just be brief, because I think it'll be a lot to digest when we get the packet, but wanted to thank Bill and the staff just for including no layoffs in that, you know, it's a, it's a really tough year and our city staff's working so hard. Like, the last thing they need to worry about is whether they're going to have a job or not. So I think it's very compassionate in that sense, and yeah, it's, it's actually, it's very creative, though it's not exactly what I thought we'd be looking at there, so thanks very much.
Towards one of your questions about, is this the right horizon? Or is it a more long-term issue? I, you know, I'm, I am feeling hopeful with the vaccine coming soon. Having said that, I would just guess too that things may continue. Actually, I I would anticipate that things may get worse for businesses, for meals, rooms and alcohol in this current year, over the course of this winter. And after that, if if a vaccine does materialize, then I think you're, I think you're right. I think it, it would, and I mean, there are, you know, a number of different vaccines that are close. I just saw some news that one has been approved in the UK or something. You know, they, it things are, it it feels like there's light at the end of the tunnel. Don't know how fast that end of the tunnel is going to get here. Not, not in time for this winter. So so anyway, just anticipating that it's still going to be tough between here and there.
Yeah, and and again, that's, you know, the budget we're in right now and that we're watching really closely. The the budget we're now talking about doesn't start till July, so it's it's always tough to forget that sometimes. We're talking about a budget that ends nineteen or twenty months from now. Nineteen months, I guess.
Any other thoughts, particularly on those final questions?
Also, is there, you know, I I made a list of some of the information we're going to include, but is if, whether it's now or you think of it, you want to make sure we, information, specific information, you want us to include, just let us know, because we don't, we want to give you what you need. I mean, for those of you that have seen the budget books before, you know, I think they're pretty complete, but you never know.
Jack, go ahead.
I don't want to needlessly extend the discussion, but I just do think, you know, we're at the front end of the budget process, budget discussion process, but I do want to praise Bill and the and Kelly and all the department heads for for their professionalism at at coming in at something like this, and it's a very, very tough year, and it really shows that we've been able to have a good team in place to to meet the challenges we're faced with.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I, credit goes to the team. They really worked this up. Although actually Kelly and Cameron were really instrumental in creating a draft budget for the team to work from, so I don't want to forget them, that leadership.
Oh, Dan.
One quick question, you know, Bill, when you alluded to the idea that we may want to sneak in a second meeting, you know, alluding to the timeline and schedule. In the past, when, when has there been a need for that kind of additional meeting?
You know, we've, it's hard to say, we've done, you know, part of it is, a lot of it depends on the council, how you want to look at the budget. Last couple of years, we haven't needed it. We've looked at the councils, I think, really stayed focused on the policy issues, the big picture issues, the key decisions, the tax rate, those kind of things. In some years, especially further back, you know, council wanted to talk to every single department and hear what was in their budget and not in there, and you know, that's perfectly understandable, too. So you know, I I can remember, we used to have Saturday, Saturday budget session from nine to three. We had police fire, public works in Capitol. We did all the big budgets on a Saturday, because it took so long, you know, that long to get through them all. And we've kind of gotten away from that. I mean, the department has a present to answer whatever questions somebody might have about a particular budget. If you wanted to do a a deeper dive of that kind of review, then we'd need more time. If you want to stay, you know, so I think some of it's where we're in how you want to go, and I just was trying to make sure that if you want more time, there is a couple week window there to find it if you need it.
Right, so we we'd want to make that decision pretty early on if we wanted to go.
I'd say you should, by the next meeting, you can get a sense of how deep you want to go, what kind of detail you want to get into.
One other question, I mean, would you characterize this as a a budget that's aimed at that idea that we're headed towards a recovery?
Yes. Yeah, that, no, and and as you can see, the lot of the hit, you know, we did a big, froze positions as opposed to really, you know, having to cut and reduce positions, because if we were cutting, those might not be the six that we were cutting, but they were the way to make it work, and we figured out ways to make it work. And then the heavy cuts to capital and equipment, those are things that, you know, kind of one time, but we, you know, this is coupled with what we've done in this current year, plus this, you know, we are piling up a backlog of infrastructure and equipment that we're going to need to deal with probably in the following budget, so it's not perfect. But if we were thinking that this was going to be a two or three year thing, then we'd be, I think, I would have been saying, hey, we've got to pave some roads. We've got to, you know, we can't put that off for that long. And we've got to really retool, we've got to rethink about the services we're providing. Some of these have got to go, because we can't, we're not, we're going to be at this lower level for a longer period of time. So we came down on the, there's another year and a half or so. Let's, let's get through this, and who knows, maybe more money will come in and we can add some of those projects back in and add some of the equipment back in. You know, you may recall when we did the rescission budget that we're in now, back in, was it May we did that? Anyway, it doesn't matter, spring, May or June. You know, we were talking about, well, if things start coming back in December, we'll start, you know, right now, we'd be adding things back. And obviously, that, that hasn't happened, so we tried to position ourselves to be somewhat optimistic, but we were still covered with our our worst case scenario, too. We went pretty hard on, you know, we looked hard at the revenues, what we thought might not come in based on what we're learning. A big federal package where we got like a million dollars would, well, actually, we'll probably change this year more than it would change next year. That would help.
But and just so I understand, I mean, you know, and I'm not asking, I mean, I think that's, that's a strategic risk that, you know, I I don't think is necessarily wrong, but I just want to fully understand. So that, you know, if if we find ourselves with this budget or some, obviously some, some version of it that we're and next year doesn't turn the corner, and we don't see that improvement. Is this something where you might see either revisit in the middle of the year? Well, let me, sorry, I'm getting ahead. Maybe the first question is, does that put us in a position then when we're here next December in a worse position than we are now?
Awesome. I mean, it's a good, it's a good question to ask, and it's one we're thinking about, which is why I tossed it out there, is did we get it right on the, you know, looking at the horizon, I, you know, I don't know. So, yeah, I mean, we would i- if we had done something different, we'd probably be sitting here having a few, you know, more projects done. But we'd be looking at lower level of service for a couple of years. And that's, you know, we could still do that. We can still retool this one now. This is very starting. Okay, thanks.
Connor, go ahead.
Yeah, really, really small thing, but I saw the library around there. I think it'd be really silly to have the library required to get petition, petition signatures. What we've relieved in the last couple of years, so I don't know any appropriate time to make like a motion like that, is, but
No, we, again, we've, we've sort of had, I mean, I think at some point you could make a formal motion or whatever, but we, we have traditionally with libraries, been the same thing, that if they, if they are not asking for a change in money, an increase in money, then we just put them in the, on the ballot. And they they've asked for this, they've asked for flat funding this year. So our assumption was, we've already built them in, our assumption was they're going on the ballot.
Just a note about the timing of the build back conversation. Maybe it'll be clearer as we go. Because there may be some things that we disagree about and say, you know, we want to include this, no, we don't want to include this. Okay, so that's got to go, you know, we may land with that conversation on, you know, okay, that particular item. You know, we, we may land with that conversation on, you know, okay, that particular item is going on, on a, a build back list. But also feels like that's something that could potentially be addressed after our budget conversations. So just a, you know, note about that, any other comments on this at this point? Okay, well, I'm looking forward to seeing additional detail, uh, Lauren, go ahead.
I, I think this is probably covered in what you're planning to give us, that nice extensive list, but just, I think, just like to Dan's point, just thinking about however it's presented, so that like it's clear in writing, like, like what are we setting up, what are we, you know, in some kind of like summary form, like these are the problems we're creating with this budget that we're gonna have to address, and then like, as we look at our kind of risk tolerance or scenarios, like, you know, if we, if we shaped it differently, like, does that feel like the right risk to take on? Given, you know, a lot of unknowns at this moment, but just, I don't know, however you can make that clear of like, you know, okay, and like, knowing that if like federal dollars came in, where would it be easy to plug, like, is it, is it like set up the right way to be responsive to the, the moment? Or, you know, what, what we might see in a year and, and be wrestling with, how easily could we adapt and, and be nimble to that? So I, I think that would be part of it, but just.
I think, I think we'll have something like that, I mean, and, and frankly, that was kind of some of our thinking, that it's pretty easy to just retool a project or buy a piece of equipment. You know, as opposed to sort of reinstating a program and going hiring process and not knowing, but if, you know, if you, we got a slug of one-time money, we could say, hey, okay, here, here are the lists, here are the projects that are on the list, here's the stuff we have, you know, we put off, let's just go get them now. And, and, and the idea is that we're, we're keeping our service level kind of the same the whole time. And, you know, I mean, we talk about federal money and, and, you know, obviously anything can happen. But, you know, timing is, is what it is, in order to meet our time meeting deadline, we have to approve our budget on January twenty one. And of course, you know, the new president will take office on January twenty, so even if something new were to happen with Congress and the president, it's not gonna be by the time we finalize our budget, so.
Okay, are, are, are we ready to move on, or Jack, is that a hand?
And there's no motion necessary.
Okay, oh, yeah, yeah.
I say, yeah, let's move on.
Okay, all right, super, well, thank you again, it's very encouraging. All right, so on to the COVID updates, Cameron, take it away.
Um, so I, I, before I get into it, I did wanna ask if, if this is a format that's still working for the council? And if you would prefer to receive these memos in your consent agenda, or if you'd like me to continue to read them? I, just a question. To ponder. But otherwise, I'll just jump into it, it's okay.
I, well, I, speaking for myself, I would not mind if they were in the consent agenda. Me too. Okay, got, got a bunch of thumbs up there, but nonetheless, what's that, Bill?
Clear direction.
We also, just so folks know that are on the call or watching at any point, all of this information is sent out in our weekly report, which is available on our website. So all of this information is accessible online through our website anytime. So I'll go through it really quick, there were some interesting changes. The governor did create some new clarifications on his recent guidelines about households not gathering inside or outside in public or private spaces. I think the biggest one that I thought was important is making sure folks knew that if they were in a dangerous or unhealthy situation, they could leave and take shelter with another household, they do not need to continue to quarantine with their families if it's unsafe, and if individuals who live alone need assistance, they can have like a, a buddy family with one other household. The Vermont Department of Health has been urging anyone who attended Sunday service at New Hope Bible Church in Irisburg on November twenty second to get tested. They said they have contacted everyone they think is a contact for that, but I do wanna, I wanted to announce that. The schools have postponed the start of any school sports, that's sort of in perpetuity for right now until further notice. Also, the schools have started testing twenty-five percent of schools to be I'm sorry, I feel like I got lost in that sentence, schools and, school employees will be tested weekly, and they're aiming to complete twenty-five percent of all the schools each week. Cases are up, they remain up, I think we're all very aware of that. There has now officially been seventy-four deaths in Vermont attributed to COVID nineteen, which is, is a, a big increase, and it's, it's happening very quickly. Dr. Levine reported that the impact of Thanksgiving isn't gonna be seen for another week or so. So they're not sure if that's going to influence further restrictions in the future, they're just sort of waiting and seeing. The city hasn't, yes, Jack, sorry.
It's okay, it, do we know, I, I know the schools, my, my month bill here were asking returning students this week about traveling out of state or having family out of state visit them, do we have any sense of what the results of that survey have been?
They haven't announced that publicly that I've seen yet, I'm not sure if they will, honestly, since it is a school by school decision. I will look for that, if, if they do, I'll make a note to look for that specific.
Thanks.
Um, the city hasn't made any updates, we're still closed per the governor's orders. We will allow for some appointments as needed, we understand that some people have business that can't be put off. So appointments can be made on a case by case basis. Also, the big, the biggest news from this past week is that they've really upped their, the state has really upped their testing locations and times and availability. So I outlined the chart of the local locations that people are, can get tested at at different times, that is available on the healthvermont.gov website where people can register, where they can call two one one, but there are quite a lot, they've opened up some spots outside of Berry, so Berry, Northfield, and, I mean, technically it's Berlin, but the hospital is doing testing now too, you just walk up, basically. So it's good, that's really the updates from this week, a lot of the governor's messaging really centered around following the guidance, and that cases remain up. So I'm not sure, and I don't have any insight on if those guidelines or guidances will change, normally those announcements are made on Fridays, so we'll see this week. He also started a new hashtag, which I think is very interesting, it's a very cheerful one, asking families and businesses to decorate our houses and businesses with holiday lights to help Vermont light the way. So that's a very nice campaign that we can all, you know, do a nice light tour in our socially distanced vehicles, so. Does anyone have any specific questions? All right, that's a fun way to end the night.
All right, um, okay, so I think that is the end of our regular business, so, Donna.
No council report, thank everybody for a very informative meeting.
Awesome, okay, Connor?
I concur with the council member from District One.
Jay?
One little, one brief thing is, thanks to those who have filled out that survey I sent out yesterday around the SRO position, that those meetings continue on, and if you, if you could do that in the next couple of days, I'd appreciate it, so we can make sure that your voices are heard, thank you.
Thanks, Dan?
Sure, just two things real quick, and they're kind of related, I had a call from a constituent that was asking about the idea of extending permits that may expire during this sort of COVID period, if there was some sort of hardship related to construction delay or ability to commence work because of COVID. And I, I, I haven't reached out to Mike Miller or anything to understand if there's actually any of these permits that would be triggered by it, but it seemed like in, in interesting, so, something to consider, especially if somebody has put in the money, effort and time to get a permit, zoning or building permit, and was delayed because of COVID contingencies. And the other question is, just in, in property tax, you know, whether we would accept, I think we've traditionally, whether our property tax collection process is in line with other communities in terms of if somebody misses a payment, I think we have a policy that any future payments apply to those past payments. And then as opposed to if you miss a payment and you pay the current payment, and it goes to that current payment, and you just try to catch up on those past payments, I didn't quite necessarily understand the whole concept, but it did, it occurred to me that we may have more of those issues arising.
And you're not looking for answers about that like right now?
No, I'm, I'm just putting out there, sort of seeding, this may be something that we may wanna consider down the line, and I'm raising them now, that's all.
Uh, Jack?
I don't have any, any report, I just want to, like Donna and Connor, thank my fellow council members and the members of the public who participated tonight for a good and constructive and productive meeting, and we discussed some issues that could have been difficult, and I think it was a great meeting, and we're gonna be done by eleven. There's the answer to your son's question, Dan.
Thank you, yeah, Lauren?
Yeah, I'll also pass and just thank you all for a thoughtful meeting.
All right, I'm also, oh, Donna, go ahead.
I just don't want us to have Jack's yardstick of eleven being good.
Yeah, yeah, I, I hear you there. That's, it's like, it's turning into like a little more regular, and it's not, it's not the goal. But hopefully we can, we have fewer things, I mean, you know, focusing on the budget, but, but generally fewer things upcoming, anyway, we'll see. All right, so for myself, I will also pass, again, also very grateful for you all, and John?
Pass.
Right. Bill?
The horse, the way it's going, I'll pass.
All right, so, we have nine minutes to spare, without objection, we will consider this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody, have an excellent night. See you later.
See you all next week.